We're good.
Good.
In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORC and may be recorded by other local media. If you could please rise for Fudge O'Leary.
Fudge O'Leary, to I, of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could do me the courtesy of remaining standing, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Harnell Bartlett and Joseph Vino. They were both on the select board for many years, and I'd just like to have a moment of silence for their service and then any board member that would like and also say some words. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I had the honor of serving with both of these gentlemen over a number of years on the board, and both of them are tremendous contributing members of this community and help form type of community we are today and what we currently enjoy. Bart Bartlett, you know, was on the board when I first got elected back in 1988, and you look back what was going on at that particular time. We moved our town hall from where the library is now to this location. We were talking about the taking of Vipsut River Park at the time. You're talking about an intermucible agreement with Hanover to supply us water. I mean, all forward-thinking, long-range planned things about was an integral part of that. In addition to that, Bart, of course, was a 33-year member of the volunteer fire department and our condolences go to Judge Hans and Glenn and David and Marilyn, his children and his wife, but also to the fire department family, had lost a good friend and contributing member of 33 years to the fire department. Joe is a former police officer in Tonau Reading, but spent virtually his entire life here, except for the first seven years of his life, and just was heavily involved. And again, I collaborated with him in an awful lot of issues over the years and also clashed with him an awful lot of issues over the years. And Joe was quite the guy. Again, he served about 15 years on this particular board and just did yeoman's work as well as serving on the Community Planning Commission. Again, he was a Vietnam War veteran of the Coast Guard, again, Korean War veteran. But just two fabulous contributing members of this community who take on the thankless, took on the thankless job of working so hard to move this community forward, and both of them, again, Joe's passion, of course, was public safety, but also veterans benefits and served on the Veterans Events Committee along with a whole host of other things, along with the Planning Commission. So, we're grateful as a community for their service. We're grateful for them, for their willingness to serve and their family allowing them to serve and supporting them, and it's a tremendous loss to the community. Just as a sort of a side note, I went to Crosswell's funeral home the other night to go to Joe's services. Bart's a private, but I believe there's going to be something at the fire station. Maybe you can...
Oh, okay.
Okay, just like that. Joe's services, Jimmy Parthia, who's also a qualified firefighter over the years, said to me, "Hey, Steve, you know, we've got two guys in here right now. You know, it's almost a violation of the open meeting law. You got two out of three here." I said, "Maybe I shouldn't go in," you know? But again, they were terrific fellows, great public servants and devoted members of this community who continue to give for decades. So, their loss is the community's loss, certainly the family's loss, and we appreciate all that they've done for us, and I appreciated the efforts that they put in, and I appreciate what I've learned from them over the years and the interaction that I had with them. And up until about a year ago, Joe stopped calling me because he wasn't, kind of lost his voice about nine months ago, but would still call on occasion and offer me his opinion on things and offer me some advice as to what he thinks should be on. Anyway, great people, good public servants, and tremendous loss to the community, but we're so grateful. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I didn't know Bart, but sounds like a terrific gentleman, and I sent my thoughts and prayers to his family and to the family as well. But I did know Joe Vino. Joe passed away at 78 years old. I met him while running for this position and kept in touch with him just about every month until the last six months. I wondered why I wasn't hearing from him, so I gave him a call. His wife answered the phone, this was last week. My wife answered the phone, mentioned that he's in hospice, and she said, "Well, let me see if he'll take the call." And I was like, "No, no, dude." All of a sudden, you had Joe in the background, "Nick Massey, give me the phone." So, I talked to him, and we had a lot of good laughs, and at the end of the call, he mentioned, "Thank you for calling and making me laugh. I really needed that this moment." And so, that meant a lot to me, to share that with him. I didn't know that he was nearing the end of his time here. I actually sent an email to Mr. Gilberto and Mr. O'Leary over the weekend before it passed and saying, "Hey, just found out Joe Vino's in hospice. Just wanted to make some comments, sending him our thoughts and prayers at this meeting here today, just to wish him well. He's done all the service for the town." And then, might let me know on Monday, and my response said it all. I said, "You gotta be kidding me." So, very unfortunate timing, but happy to have known him for that long time. I just wanted to talk about what he's done for North Reading and his past in general. Joe was a 70-year resident of North Reading. He was a veteran of the Coast Guard. He was a Reading police officer. He was a 15-year selectman for our town. He was on the Community Planning Commission for four years, Veterans Affairs Commission for 20 years, Recycling Commission for four years, North Reading Housing Authority for 10 years, Veterans Memorial Commission for 20 years, Commission on Disability for 10 years, Council on Aging for 15 years, Mystic Valley Elder Services for 15 years, and a youth football coach for 14 years. So, that is terrific service, and we certainly thank him. I actually would like this board, and I asked a couple of members here over the weekend if we could honor Joe Vino in some way in North Reading, whether that be naming something after him, whether that be providing his gift, his family with a gift of love from North Reading, anything to honor the Vino family. Joe left behind his loving wife Diana, 54 years, his two sons and his three grandchildren. So, please keep these folks in your thoughts and prayers. Thoughts and prayers, thank you.
I guess I said a lot. I agree. I did not know either personally, Mr. Vino, I think I talked to him just a couple of times here and there, but nothing quite as detailed as Mr. Massey and Mr. O'Leary, but I do know that 15 years on this board is a commitment. Most of the time is awesome, but a lot of the time, too, it can be stressful, and sometimes it's, you know, to do it five times, to get re-elected five times, that's just, that's pretty good. So, I mean, that just tells you everything you need to know. So, thank you for your comments. Mr. Gilberto.
Go ahead a minute.
Oh, yeah, please.
So, I just wanted to take a minute and just talk about Bart. Mr. O'Leary did a great job of giving a little history on Bart. Bart started his service with the North Reading Fire Department in 1981 and then serving 33 years as a qualified firefighter. So, prior to that, he also, as Mr. O'Leary pointed out, served, I believe, on the Finance Committee and on the Select Board, and then prior to that, also serving in the town of Hanover as a qualified firefighter as well. So, I just ask you to keep the family in the prayer, in your prayers, and then also his service will be at the Union Congregational Church this Saturday at 11:00 for any of you who might want to attend. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item up is to recognize another firefighter, qualified firefighter, Jeff Strong, who's here on the occasion of his retirement from the Reading Fire Department after 47 years of service to the town. In a variety of capacities as a firefighter slash dispatcher over the years, most recently as a dispatcher, working right up until the very, very last opportunity he was able to get along with. So, we very much appreciate that. And Jeff, I know you're looking to stay involved here in town, through the schools if possible as well. I see you stationed off, and I've seen you stationed out, and these folks have seen you out in the community, which is really happy for you to be able to retire and thankful for the commitment that you've given to us. We don't often recognize retiring employees in the public safety departments here, but we felt it was appropriate, and I can tell from the folks in the audience here, they agree, for you, given your tenure and your role as a qualified firefighter, doing this in addition to everything else that you did in your life over that period of time. We're very much appreciative. For those who don't know, Jeff is a resident here in town as well, from the bond, right? And we are thankful for your service. So, we have a presentation, I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything, but certainly give the chief an opportunity as well. But when we're done, we do have a presentation for you.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. So, yeah, again, so Jeff, just celebrating your 47 years of service with the town, again, your service with the North Reading Fire Department in 1978. And while the book is closed as far as the fire department's service goes, certainly isn't in serving the community. So, I want to thank you for your time with us, and thank you for the opportunity to recognize Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I said to Jeff earlier, I said, "We were both pretty young guys here 47 years ago, and we haven't aged a bit."
Ask Don who was first soccer coach watching. So, I partied a little more at the stadium when we, you know, gave Jeff a little coffee and going-away party. But yeah, so Jeff, Jeff was my first soccer coach in 1980, along with his partner in part, John Zorri, and I still have the trophy, Jeff. Here we go.
And it's also important that Jeff has contributed an awful lot of time to the school department over the years in coaching and trainer.
Back in the Saturday, sub sixth-grade computer class.
Sub sixth-grade computer class, so he continues to serve the community. But 47 years is a long time, and he's seen a lot of calls and been into a lot of homes and helped an awful lot of people over the years, and he's a fixture at the fire department, he's a fixture in the community, and he's a gift to us all, and we certainly appreciate your service and expect you to continue for years to come. But very much appreciated, and congratulations, and thank you for all that you've done.
Thanks, David. No, thank you, Jeff. Seeing you right on top of being a coach and a sub, qualified firefighter, you also work elections, so you do a lot in town, and I see you here and there. So, I'm looking forward to hopefully continuing to see you, and all the best of luck.
And you're a fixture in Martin's Pond neighborhood, for sure. Yeah, thank you for being a neighbor.
Thank you.
Here is trophy, right?
We've already, uh, we're gonna do a small slide here.
Yeah.
We know this is going, right?
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna do two. I'm gonna do two. Yeah, there we go, slash. All right, thank you.
I just want to read this out loud. Unfortunately, it wasn't right in front of the chair when he was presenting it. Presented to Jeff Strong in recognition of your 47 years of dedicated service to the North Reading Fire Department in 2025.
Thank you. As I was pointing, right, the high school, North Reading High School class of '78, and in August, it was the middle of the night, and the tone goes off, the fire horns blew, all that stuff back then, and Campbell Williams was on fire. So, I mentioned this at our time at the fire station, I got to ride in the back of Engine Two maybe, and riding on the back of a fire truck is really, really cold, unless it's January, then it's really, really cold. But Fire Chief Nelson Harris said to me that day, "Makes you a believer, right? Yeah, it was a really big fire." For those who've been around town for a while, know, and yeah, it makes you respect what we're, what we do every day. And we continue to provide that service every day. It's a great department. That's evidenced by the work at our brush fires last fall, where the community came and gave us, you know, donations of food and all kinds of things, showing appreciation for our work. So, I'm glad you've been a part of it. Thank you for everyone who came, and we'll see you around town. Make sure you vote early, vote up, and tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Rita gets around.
Good evening.
Right into that microphone.
Yeah, if you pull over to the end, actually.
Good evening, to the chair. So, our band sales are coming up for sale. This is for the property over on Mill Street, the MWRA Interconnection. So, we went out a year for this bond, so we got two bids. Oppenheimer was the lowest bid at 5.4682%. So, the band is for one year for $551,000. It will come due May, sorry, May 21st or 26th is what it will come due. And then, we did another band for $6,467,803, and we had six bidders, and Trustis Securities was the lowest bidder at 3.1617. That's also a year band for, there's a few items that are on here. I don't know, do you want me to go through the items or?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I don't have it. I don't have it with me, I'm sorry. I'll go off memory. Margaret? So, I know the biggest one is the high school, middle school project. That was for $4.2 million. We have water, interconnection. We had the roads and streets. We had the intersection, Park and Central Intersection. I'm so sorry, I don't have this.
Chestnut Bridge, 805.
Chestnut Bridge, 805.
Eight hundred and five, I'm going there, too.
I'll just talk for a moment, while you're pulling that up, about the middle, high school borrowing. So, this is the final bond anticipation note that will be issued for that. It is due 10th year next May, right? And we are in discussions with MSBA, as you know, to close out the process with them. I've talked with them recently, it's a week or so ago. We are targeting that we will be closed out before the expiration of this bond anticipation note. We will likely need to take action at October town meeting with regard to appropriating funds against the principle on this in order to reduce what the long-term borrow rate might be in the end, should there be an actual long-term note that needs to be issued. It'll depend upon whether we close out that, and we're still going through that process. But MSBA is aware of our timeline, and they have, they're understanding, and they're collaboratively working with them towards closing out within that time of mine. But a town meeting will be needed in October, right, to conclude all this. Mill Street, which we talked about, it's out on the market. You've seen on social media, we've got some pictures up there. We did not get it through MLS, but we were able to list through Zillow, so that is quite a large generator of traffic. We're well over 1,000 views of the property. We are going to have an open house at the property later this week. It's going to be a little bit unusual for buyers in that they can come to the open house, but they will need to request a request or proposal so they can get it, they have a lot of paper copies, in order to formally submit their proposal, which will be due, I believe, the deadline is May 27th, and we do have a minimum or reserve bid amount of about $799,200. We have one interested party today for the walkthrough. I think if we have that, have that open house, will drive a little bit more traffic and see whether it's actually interesting, although it may be a process. We're doing our best to make it look and seem like a normal open house real estate transaction, even though it isn't really because it's municipal land and it's subject to Chapter 30B, but we're trying to walk that down, and we're certainly getting people's attention. We have six people who requested the RFP, so that's a good, certainly a good thing to see as well, but I think, you know, getting an open house might just get, you know, more folks just to see the property and maybe get more interested in it. So, those are two big ones on this wall of the grid, right?
Yes.
Did I buy you nothing?
Yes, I do. I thought I had it on here, my apologies. So, it's Park and Central Street Intersection Design and Construction for $75,000, the Hood School Boy Art Replacement for $75,000, the Water Main Rehab and Replacement for $195,226, the Road Rehab and Replacement for $600,000, the Bridge Calvert and Replacement Rehab and Replacement for $250,000, Third Meeting House Exterior for $175,000, the Hood School Roof Replacement for $200,000, and the Central Street Bridge for the $805,000.
Great, thank you. And just the reason that we ended up getting it, the two separately?
Because the Mill Street, which is the MWRA, it's a, we have it as a taxable bond because if we sell it, we can pay back the bond with, and if we sell it, sorry, if we sell it, we pay back the bond, we can pay back the bond earlier than, and we don't have to keep the money separate, so.
Any questions?
Mr. Massey, a little motion. I'll just confirm, is this through you?
Chair.
Is this more like refinancing or is this for future projects?
Thank you. It's like refinancing because we haven't sold the property yet. Once we sell the property, then it's like paying off the mortgage, but we haven't sold it yet, so. And that band is just, it's just like a loan, a small loan for like a year or two, whatever you do the borrowing terms for, so it's just kind of like financing it so you can get your projects done.
Can I have a motion, please, Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the vote prepared by Bond Council in print for the board in connection with the sale of the town's $551,000 general obligation bond anticipation notes Series A and $6,467,803 general obligation bond anticipation note Series B, each dated and closing May 22nd, 2025, and sign-related no closing documents.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walder. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
And here's some documents in the design, right?
Yes, they all have green tabs on them.
The bonds and then the certificate that gets approved now instead of a motion to approve.
Yes, yes, that's a natural. Yes, she has, yeah, there's another copy in there, yes. They sent it all together, so.
And that's huge that we now can vote abbreviated motions instead of reading the whole thing.
So, what is now, do you need enough?
Ideally.
Okay, yeah, fine.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can.
Sometimes we can't be trusted, your whole talk gets back, that's why I'm...
Yeah, no, that's okay, I can, I can wait.
Okay, so we'll get them closer in a minute, and we'll sign by the end of the night?
Or I can wait and they can sign them, if that's okay. It's, that's fine.
How many signatures are there?
There's like a lot.
Oh, it's like a lot of tabs there.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna continue, sign, you can sign them, and we're gonna keep going as we sign them, we're gonna multitask this one. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, the next item is for the board to consider opting in for electronic billing for, among other things, real estate tax bills. Something that we've been discussing throughout the budget process that has a potential opportunity for cost savings in the form of postage, not having to mail to all of the property owners here in town. State law has changed, so we uncovered the past couple of weeks to allow us to expand from just an exercise or utility building to real estate building as well. So, I'm just gonna ask, Mary, do you want to add anything with regard to what this is or how it might work?
Yes, thank you. So, we're gonna switch our online systems from UniBank to City Hall, and when City Hall came in, they have several communities right now. You would have to opt into the online payments, so you'd have to set up an account like we discussed before, and you can put them into cards, so you can pay multi-bills at once and only get charged one, one bill. So, they're gonna be doing our real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, trash and water. And anybody that opts into it will get an emailed bill for real estate, for any of the bills that they want to opt into. They'll keep track of all the emails. If anything gets kicked back, we'll get an email back saying that the email does not exist, and then a bill gets sent out. We don't have to update anything, they'll do all the updates. They are gonna do, they're gonna take our files and upload them, so the taxpayers will have a few years of history, so they can go back and check their bills to see what was paid over the last couple of years. It doesn't cost the town any, any money to do this, and it'll be a savings for us for, to mail out the bills, so we don't have to mail out as many bills. There is a flyer that was in the packet that was from another community that they'll put into the bills at their cost to let the taxpayers know that, you know, this is a new system that's coming up. They can do, they can schedule payments, they can do automatic payments, they just have to opt into it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Massey, for jump-starting this, you know, because we didn't, again, it seems like it was just something that was changed, because up until then you couldn't, but it's great just because going paperless is just great. I mean, not for everybody, but again, that's why it's an opt-in, so, you know, you opt in and then it's not a, you know, right, am I saying that correct?
You're voluntary. The only thing, again, just to be clear, there is a cost associated with transactions as it's a case with UniBank right now. And you know, again, just like in, you know, small businesses that you may see, there's a charge to the business owner for using the transaction. The cost is usually covered through the profits, right? We're not, we don't profit off of the payments that are made, they're, you know, assessed under the law. Unfortunately, there is a cost for the transaction, but there is a convenience to go for it, and I don't know whether it'll end up being exactly the same or slightly more, slightly less, but just to be clear, you know, we're not in a position where we're able to pay that cost, we don't build it into a profit to cover it, so unfortunately, that results in being paid by the bill payer. But the cost isn't really what the complaints have been, it's the ability to schedule payments and things like that, which can improve with this.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, it's gonna be the same cost for an ACH, it'll still be 50 cents, but if you use your debit or credit card, they do charge a fee, depending on how much the bill is, is depending on how much the fee will be. And before you check out, it will say that there is a fee associated with it, and it'll be extra. it'll be X amount of dollars that you can cancel out of it before you actually, um, keep a credit card payment. But it'll give you the amount.
In theory, Mr. Chairman, there, there will be, uh, we expect there will be savings in postage, uh, it's tough to project what it will be, um, and we'll, we want to recognize that and we'll monitor it as we go through the course of the fiscal year and we have a better understanding of current budget, we'll, um, do our best to account for that, um, for the fiscal year 27 budget. Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Yep, please.
The one, thank you so much, appreciate this, it's awesome, good savings to the town. Um, the one thing I wanted to ask is, since it's a, since it's new, uh, specifically with real estate taxes and it's a little sensitive, is there any thought that first year, if a resident is coming close or has missed it, that we can notify them and say, hey, we understand you've opted in, you've now passed it? Or is there any way that we can give them a, a freeze period that will allow them to recover?
Um, I know, sorry. Thank you.
Sorry.
I know that, um, the law says that they're due on a specific date and any time after the due date, we can, we can charge the interest. I know when it was COVID, I know that they did do that way back when with COVID, um, so I'm not sure, I, I would have to talk to the town administrator for that, but the law states that as the next day that they're due, that we can charge interest. I know that, um, I don't know if the new system would send out a bill, uh, send out an email saying that the bills are due. I'm not sure, I didn't, I didn't ask that question.
No worries. I'm just curious, so it's so new that someone might mess up and not mean it or has been paying it for 50 years and, you know, they're trying to, I don't know.
Yeah.
See one, someone popping up.
Yeah, um, like I said, they're going to have to opt into it, so I'm, I'm not sure. Um, we're, we're going to be shutting down Unipay, so, um, they won't be able to get into Unipay to pay, so they'll, they'll see that it's not a City Hall when we go in. Um, and we'll, we'll start the new fiscal year, so we'll start July 1st. Um, so they'll see that it's a new system. And I know that we have quite a few people that do pay. Um, I think it was over 6,000 that are registered for Unibank, so there is quite a few.
And I know it keeps the town moving for that getting paid, but if that's why maybe, you know, uh, some sort of ability to say, hey, this is unusual compared to your traffic. I'm sure there won't be many that have opted in right on the first year, is kind of what I'm thinking, and then we'll be able to figure it out.
And I, I think that was through the state too, that they, they, um, they said that we could waive the interest. I think that was actually through the state that we could.
Well, it could be as flexible as we can, we're getting some limitations on penalties versus interest.
Right.
For us, but I think the key is a notice, right, does the email get out to somebody? That's the first step.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallner, is there any?
No, it's all good. No, I think it's great.
All right. Why does state change the rules?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to messages of general law, chapter 60, section 3A, to authorize the collector to establish a voluntary electronic billing option for real estate, personal property, excise tax and utility bills.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, and this is, um, the one that I signed, it's just carpet. And it has this, this coming through, I'll just note that Justice Gonzalez has joined, uh, by, uh, Zoom. Um, she should be able to unmute herself and activate a camera if she so chooses. Oh, I see where she is, great.
Hi, everybody.
You look like there's some sun back there. Uh, nice. It's raining here all day.
Sorry.
Mr. Gilberto, on the next ones, right, because I, just a question, because we're going to review and, uh, vote on the warrant article recommendations as well?
Yes.
Right, so, um, in the interest that that public hearing's at eight, what I'd like to do, and knowing that there's also a public hearing on this in two weeks, um, just to kind of, even if we save a minute or two per article, what I'd like to do is read the motion and then for the discussion, we'll be the discussion and then we'll vote. If that's okay.
So you want to take them together?
Yes.
I'm sure the constable is, he's somewhere, we'll be here, appreciate that.
He was here, I don't know where he went.
Put it up, put it there.
Oh, there it is.
He's not in his usual spot, someone was in his seat.
Yeah, I was looking, I was looking over there.
I wasn't moving Mr. Karuji.
That's the truth.
That's awesome. Yeah, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, as we go through these, uh, I'll be looking to the finance director to provide financial information to the extent that it might be wrong as per votes. You'll note the order has changed based upon the feedback through the discussion that you and I had. Um, we did our best to try to move the things the folks thought might get the lowest attention toward the front of the warrant. Um, we do have limitations, and there are fiscal year 2025 actions that we have to take before we can come to fiscal year 26 budget. So that did move a number of those, kept them in their same spot. Um, but we, we tried to reflect kind of what we discussed. Um, and I guess as I'm pulling this up, some of the things that we'll do with the warrant based upon the feedback, and I'm sort of, you know, reviewing, but trying to make sure that I don't, that I'm not misremembering anything. You know, we've talked about, um, the recommendations and so we will continue to add the recommendations to the, uh, printed version of the warrant that will be bound and mailed to every, um, residential property here in town. Um, I've talked with the chair, based upon the feedback, in the instance where a vote is not unanimous, we would note what the vote count was, that's our intention. So that'll be new, the additional information that would be in the warrant. Um, if the vote was unanimous, we would write, the select board recommends unanimous. That, that was sort of our thinking. Otherwise, it would say, select board recommends, by board, or selecting board, does not, whatever it might say. So trying to capture that. The other thing is, we've talked with town council about the issue of, um, more information in the warrant in terms of dollar amounts. So what we're going to try to do to address that is where the description is written right in there, as I think we've done in, in a recent town meeting as well. It's anticipated that the transfer will, will be in this amount. So that'll put the information out there and really will encourage folks when they get the articles. Can read the article or read the description, that's always been in the spot where most information kind of written in the latest of English is there, so, um, I think it's the best way to sort of knock Asian whole town meeting by saying, warrant article said this dollar amount and now it's not that, but previewing what that's going to be. And I, I hope the capital addressed a lot of the feedback that we heard from the public, from the board members, from others, um, along the way, um, in that particular warrant. None of that appears in what you're looking at. This is a simple, um, straightforward printer warrant, but for the first time, what we are doing is including copies of both the omnibus budget and the capital budget. That's not normally with a printer warrant, so that's an additional expansion of available information. I don't know how many people are looking at the warrant at the eight locations that it's posted in, but if the board looked there, they would see the listed out of the projects, they would see the actual operating budget as well. So appreciate everybody's feedback on that. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Yes.
Is, is that not normal, is that not for, uh, is that not something that not very does include the capital, um, capital grooming line items in the operating budget?
In the, so in the version of the warrant that's signed and then posted in the eight locations in town, it has not traditionally had that in it, so we're going to add that to it.
The ones that goes around town?
The ones you get in the mail, yes.
The one that gets mailed to everybody, uh, does generally have the omnibus budget and the capital budget, and it will be in there as well.
Awesome, thank you.
That wasn't the final version of the Omni?
Which one was?
Are you putting it in tonight, the posted one?
It's supposed to be in today.
I'll sign your file.
Okay, just when we get to that, we can roll over what might be different.
Okay.
So I'll go article by article, um, so we start with, are, do you want to start with the motion and then I can offer my?
Correct.
Well, I, I probably should offer my recommendation to the vote.
Then we'll do the motion and then we'll talk.
Yeah. So if we were to start with article one, I'm going to start right with, uh, the one drawing the most, it was drawing the most attention. Articles one, two, and three are citizens petition relative to zoning bylaw amendments for, uh, family zoning, um, so-called HBTAs slash.
I haven't heard about this, tell us about it.
I didn't hear anybody's familiar with it. Um, these were citizens petitions that were submitted. Um, you know, I struggled a bit with how I ought to be proposing this to the board, um, but where I did sign an action plan, um, stating that the town will afford compliance, I, I administratively feel that I have an obligation to recommend that the board consider a vote to recommend the articles. Um, and that's purely because of my professional obligations with regard to filing that action plan, um, that recommendation would apply to all three of the articles. To be clear, a planning commission has not taken a position to recommend or not recommend at this point, they won't do so until at least, I believe, May 20th.
Correct.
Planning commission meeting, um, they are not sponsoring this article, nor are they offered a recommendation, and they've said very clearly they would not do so until after their, um, until after their hearings concluded on May 20th. So my recommendation would be to, that the board vote to recommend the articles.
Mr. Massey can have that first motion and we'll go to the discussion, please.
Can you guys, um, go back to what we were saying earlier, how we're going to do this? This is the first time we're doing so, what is this?
So what we're going to do is, um, usually what we do is discuss and then do the motion and then discuss some more. We're going to do that all in one for the interest of time to get that public hearing to aid. So when you, when you read the motion, right, we'll go to further discussion, then we're going to discuss until we're done and then we'll vote.
We sign the, the eight warrant acts?
Yes, after we all go through all.
Motionated first, so I'm asking. Or agenda, I mean.
Yeah, the, the board, the, we signed the warrant after we're done with all of it for the.
I see what you're doing. So I think we're, so, and this has happened in the past, depending upon how we go forward, you'd be offering, so I'll offer a recommendation for the board's vote in terms of its recommendation, then the motion will get offered, um, or not offered, and then a vote taken and there would be a recommendation. Uh, before that happens, I'll offer the summary like I just did with regard to these articles. Um, my suggestion, if we're going to go in that fashion, that we hold off on voting to sign the warrant until we get to the end?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the, the motions I had were only ones before, I think. It's going to the end, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, the citizens petitions, how did those get moved up to, to the beginning?
So I heard feedback from the board in the last meeting that wanted to consider, um, those items which might draw the largest crowd and the most interest earlier in the, um, on the warrant, so we moved those three to the, uh, to be numbers one, two, and three. I, I kept on, I mean, the article for zoning and the residential date with it, because it just felt like to ping pong back and forth or in and out of the only articles wouldn't make sense. Um, and then we basically would go through all of the financial articles for fiscal year 25 that are needed to be addressed before we get to fiscal year 26, um, which is the operating budget, and we stacked them up. Again, it's up to the board and City Hall that wants it to be, and I, I had them in the, the order that they would customarily appear in a warrant in the last version, but I was asked to consider an alternative and do so with the chair, which I did, um, and that's what, you know.
I just didn't know if to vote it on or anything, you need to vote on, move them around or not?
I think you're, if you wanted to move them, I think you could, if you want to change your order, you could do that.
No, no, no worries.
You can do that by consensus, you could do it by vote, or you could just adopt the entire thing with the bullet.
Just understand that the, uh, the town meeting warrant that we have in our packet, it doesn't say citizen petition in the titles of article one and article two. But four, article three, or article four does. See what I'm saying?
So if I go to the warrant, I, I think I know what we've, what we've done with these petitions, it was taken a title that was submitted with each of them in the signed version that came with the ten signatures on it and copied it into these articles. We have traditionally flagged them as citizens petitions, and I don't have any problem with doing so. I would just say if we're going to do that, we should just make sure we do it for all four of those articles. But one of them, the fourth one, I believe came in with that title in the handwritten petition. There's nothing that prohibits us from just saying they're all citizens petitions, and I wouldn't have a objection to that. I'm just trying to follow the town council, say, make sure we copy everything and put it in the warrant. So there was a description submitted with the three zoning articles, we would use that description based upon what, what was provided.
Is the board fine with that?
I just, my understanding that what was submitted, of the citizen petition is what has to be included in the warrant, is that, uh, we can't be tied, we can't be tied.
I guess what I'm saying in response to that is, I, I know that there have been instances, at one, one time, every citizen's petition was introduced with a title that said, citizen's petition, code, and then whatever the title was. In this instance, we just copied all four, including the, the residential one. You know, I'll, I'll leave it to the board to decide what wants to end with.
I mean, can we, I think, I think it's pertinent to highlight where the citizens petitions edits are. And I'd like to ask the board to support that because I'm looking through it, I have to find where Steve's edits are. I, if, if you're, I'm trying to take it from looking at a resident who doesn't pay attention. You want to know what's going on, citizen, citizen petition, these are the highlighted items that are being added or edited, there's just no indication of that.
I, I guess the response I would offer is, I think if we wanted to highlight that the first four are citizens petition with that in the title, I think we certainly could do that. In terms of adjusting or amending the language that's in there, I think we probably would be advised not to, um, by town council.
But I, I don't even know what is being put in there. So how, how do you expect a random, random resident coming to town meeting to, I, I can't even pick that up.
Hold on, let me, let me coordinate this. Uh, Mr. Massey, pick what up? Like, what do you mean? Like, if I'm reading the?
I just mentioned that there's a citizen's petition.
Correct.
Where they edited the.
You're talking about.
Language. I don't know what he edited as of right now. I do know one of those things is 55 plus, so I had to go through and find it myself. So what I'm asking is that we should be calling out or highlighting what someone is changing to something that just got rejected last year.
But that's where one of us can go up and highlight the changes.
I, I disagree.
But that's how it's.
It's also going to folks' homes that might not go to town meeting, I, I.
We can't though change the language, folks, you can't do that. It's a citizen petition, just like the one that, you know, when the bedroom went down. I couldn't go in and say, let me add my edits because I disagree with it. I can't cha, we can't change it. So, but what we can do is go up, anyone who disagrees, whether on a board or a citizen, go up, when these are being discussed at town meeting and point out what the changes are and advocate for or against, that we can do.
Can you point out what's in there? Since we're going to vote on this to recommend or not, can you point out?
Mr. Massey? This is actually what I wanted to do, where I wanted to read the motion and then we can discuss it, but I'm going to vote a certain way and I don't have, I'm not going to explain why, well, actually I will explain why, but pointing out what's different, I'm going to read the motion. If I agree with it, I'm going to say yes, if I disagree with it, I'm going to say no. That's what I'm going to do, but I'm not going to do anything further.
Okay, so the motion that's here says nothing about 55 plus, so I'm asking, how do I know that this citizen didn't throw something else in one of these sections? I'm asking what the changes are.
And what I'm saying is.
And you don't know, but you want us to vote on it.
Well, that, we're here to vote on this.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
We will not be filibustering here like they were in the committees.
Listen, I'm not here to disagree, I'm not to, to get an argument, I'm here to ask you, what am I voting on? What are the changes? So don't take everything as an argument, please.
No, but this is the third time we've discussed this, and the changes are. Mr. O'Leary, can you answer the changes?
Yeah, this is the exact same proposal as was proposed at the October town meeting with two exceptions. One is to allow fifty-five plus by right, and the other is to cap the number of units as to the number of units that are currently there on these two processes. That's it. Everything else is identical. I didn't reinvent the wheel at all, and I didn't even reinvent the wheel in relation to the amendments. Those amendments were already drawn up and available and proposed to the planning commission last October, which they chose not to include.
He's already, he's going to revisionist.
No, 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 you asked what the difference was. That's the difference.
I'm just asking.
I'm answering your question.
I'm not trying, I know, Steve.
Okay, I'm sorry, you can't understand.
Steve, I'm just trying to find that second thing that you brought up. Where is that in this article? Please.
Which thing? Which one? The number of units?
The second, you said you have two things.
The cap, it's the fifty-five plus and the other is the total number of units that would be, we capture the current number.
Please, thank you. That's all I'm asking for.
But anyone is allowed at town meeting to point out the differences. Any of us can, and it's actually happened with things, to point out the difference. So that's all I was trying to say.
Since we actually got to where I wanted to, to try to make it a little bit more streamlined,
okay, I know that following instructions are difficult, but can I please have a motion and then we can continue talking about this, which is actually what we're doing?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article One, citizens petition to amend code, zoning bylaws, establishment of old road, multifamily zoning overlay districts.
Second motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walder. Further discussion?
So if you look on page two, under subsection two hundred dash, with a underscore, number C, at no time may the district contain more than nine hundred and eight units of housing.
And that's what Martin's Landing is at right now?
That's a combination of Martin's Landing and Edgewood, and combined. And again, you saw the other one as far as page one.
What's the other one?
Use regulations, age restricted fifty-five plus housing is expressly allowed by right. That's at the bottom of page one and the top of page two. Those are the only two changes from what was proposed last October.
So, because we'll get to that one, so on this motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Massey, please.
Dean, I give up. I think this is the biggest one. The use regulations read as follows. The following use shall be permitted as a right in a whole road, multifamily overlay district, multifamily housing, quote unquote, a building with three or more residential dwelling units, or two or more buildings on the same lot, with more than one residential uniting, one residential dwelling unit in each build, period. And then you added a sentence that says, age restricted fifty-five plus housing is expressly allowed by right. Now, are those two not contradictable?
No, no. Then again, this was based upon the advice of council was given last October, the October town meeting for the CPC to consider the amendment if they so chose to implement it, which they chose not to.
I'm just curious, though, how does that work if you can expressly by right have a fifty-five in all these areas, but also you're zoning it for multifamily housing? I, I just don't, I can't pick that up.
Doesn't it mean just multifamily housing, though, that it has to be fifty-five plus? You can vote.
I can vote for multifamily, you say you gotta be over sixty.
You've talked about this for a year, Mr. Chair, it says with school age, with children.
What are you talking about? What hap, this is, this is changing the rights of the owners of the property as to what they can do expressly by right. So what it does, this MBTA Communities Act, that's three A, is allows the current property owners and future property owners by right to do this without a special permit. All we added in here from last October is that the current owner of the property or future owners of property, if they so choose to exercise their rights. Can I finish my comment? If the owners of the property choose to express, use the use, express the use of the property as they so choose, they can restrict, age restrict, any, all, or some of the units, whatever they decide to do without a special permit. That's all. It's very simple, very straightforward.
Mr. Massey?
Okay. Mr. Chairman? On the mast.gov, section three A, multifamily zoning as of right in MBTA communities, the first sentence, Mr. O'Leary, starts with, an MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right, provided however that such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be suitable for families, lived children, from the state. First sentence, I actually, no, there's a semicolon, so, no, still, still one sentence. So how, so with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to Article One, Two, and Three.
We can't amend the citizen's petition.
You do that at town.
You cannot do it.
You do it at town meeting.
Thank you for the town meeting?
You want for the amendment at town meeting?
We can't do it here.
Okay, we'll do it at town meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
What I'm going to make is a motion to, basically, if the state rejects this plan because of the add-ons that you're putting in, that to come back to town meeting, that we are required to come back to town meeting. Because my confidence level in that getting by the state is not happening in the first sentence I just read, so for me, just to cover the residents and the towns' interests, I believe that, I don't want the residents to feel like they're being duped, you know, God forbid if the state says no. So I want the ability for us to be protected and therefore have an amendment to require to come back to town meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yeah, so I won't be supporting any of the citizens, but how many, how many people signed the citizen's petition?
Ten.
Fifteen, at least fifteen, maybe twenty, I forget.
Okay, fifteen, twenty. So I know that at October town meeting, the majority of the citizens voted no. So I will stand by that, and I won't be supporting any of these citizen petitions, or voting not to recommend.
And who's involved? Anyone else? Okay, do you wanna?
Sure, good. I think it's just important to understand, as I stated earlier, in an early meeting, the only reason that I proposed these, for consideration for town meeting is because we, as a board, the majority of the board, voted to have the town administrator sign an action plan. In his submitting an action plan, he committed to putting forth for consideration something to come into compliance with the MBTA three A act. This board and all the CPC to date has come forward with any proposal to allow town meeting to come into compliance with three A. So it's counter to what we had voted as the majority of the board to do. Secondarily, a lot has changed since last October in relation to the Supreme Court decision that basically determined that the law is constitutional, and that the Supreme Court did determine that the state erred in their ruling out the guidelines. The state has extended the deadline again to July, which allowed us again to come into interim compliance by signing the action plan, and they're in the process of promulgating the rules appropriately, which will be done before the July deadline, probably before our June town meeting. So the SJC ruling is very different. They extended the deadline. The legislature, in their infinite wisdom, the ones who passed this legislation, also have been, for all discretionary grants and funding, have determined to add a little caveat to all of the funding sources, which means that any grants that are available to communities, they must be in compliance with state law, so that any communities that are not in compliance with state law, which is deemed ineligible, not just the four that were in the original legislation, or the other seventeen or whatever it was that were added to it, it's, it's actually growing. So, so a lot has changed, and I just think it's important for the public at town meeting to have the opportunity to come into compliance. What they choose to do is entirely up to them. As I stated at the planning commission meeting, if the planning commission had come up with a proposal that they supported to, to come into compliance, I would be in full support of it, and I wouldn't have found it necessary to do this. I think it's important for town meeting to have the opportunity to do so, and that's why it's here. And in the absence of any other proposal, I think we have an obligation to, to support it and put it forth for consideration for the town to come into compliance. If town meeting determines not to do it, that's certainly within their free act, indeed, to do so, they're just gonna be doing it with a lot more information than they had before. The two amendments were quite simply to allay some of the concerns of the people at, not just Martin's Landing, but across the community. If you recall, last June, there was an awful lot of sympathy at town meeting for the people at Martin's Landing in relation to the over fifty-five restriction. A lot of information has been provided since then. This amendment would allay that concern and address it. And as far as the number of units that would be there, there was some concerns expressed in relation to the ability of a developer to go into Martin's Landing or Edgewood and subdivide units and bring in more family housing. The other second amendment, capping it at nine hundred and eight units, would preclude that from happening altogether, and again, is in excess of what is already required by MBTA, which is seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty units. So the two amendments are pretty straightforward, address two of the major concerns, along with the other single largest major concern was, was this piece of legislation legal, and that's been determined. We've also been told by the Attorney General's Office since January, in January, the decision came out, and subsequently, that it is her intention to enforce compliance with the MBTA Communities Act to the fullest extent that she can, which would basically end up being a court, going to court, getting a court decision to have a disinterested third party coming into our community and determining where this is going to go, rather than us determining where it's gonna go. So I'm not saying this is the perfect plan. Again, and I, I didn't, I don't have staff here, so I took exactly what was proposed before. The answers to the major questions have been answered. Not necessarily did everybody's satisfaction, but answered for sure. It is legal, we need to comply, and we have a lot at stake right now. We've got eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in grants right now that we've been awarded, somewhere at risk if we don't come into compliance in time, and there's hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars on the board that again, as they're passing legislation now, we will be deemed ineligible for. So if people want to remain in noncompliance, at least they're gonna do it with full disclosure and information as to what the ramifications are. Ramifications, the grant funds, the other ramification is, the court is gonna appoint someone to come into this community and decide where this district is gonna go. I don't think that's a good idea. Planning Commission, I applaud their efforts over the last couple of months in trying to come up with some sort of an alternative plan, and I explained it to them at that point, that I would be supportive of it, they weren't able to do so, they're gonna be determining whether or not they're gonna come out and support this on May twentieth, and I think they do. So it's all pretty straightforward, but people decide, can I'm all in favor of that? And a lot more information, and a lot more at risk.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just be very brief, just to highlight a few things Steve said, which is that it's very clear what was voted on before is different than it is now. We know that because town council told us we can do that. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to, we'd have to be stuck to our two-year rule. And the risk that I'm not willing to take the risk on for the town, the three risks are legal fees to defend ourselves, which could easily be well over a hundred thousand dollars to do that. The Attorney General will come after us, we have to consider that's gonna be impacting us. Free cash is probably how we'll pay for it if we don't fund it. The second thing is grants you already mentioned, eight hundred and forty thousand, more to come. Again, if we don't pass it, it'll be two years before we can even be eligible for future grants, and it's gonna add up, we already know that. And I'm not looking to have a master come into town and tell us how to develop our town. So the town can decide whatever they want to do, but these risks are way too high for any of us to take on and not let the town make an informed decision. So that's why I support you should be recommending this. Thank you.
So, like I've said.
Could I?
Oh.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Could I just say, it was on the jury of the board who asked the TA to go into compliance, but that was a three to, two of us voted no for that, and I will stand by that. I will not comply to a state government who wants to strong our, wants to take our rights to zone. It's a principle for me, and, you know, there's people who throw the T over, and there's people who don't, so I'll throw the T, and I, I won't be recommending it.
Mr. Chair, one of these options is recommend the town meeting, right? Can we? If that's the case.
I'm sorry?
If that's the case, am I able to make my amendment?
One of the options is to recommend the town meeting, if we choose to recommend the town meeting.
Oh, okay.
But I don't think that's where we're going. But let me.
I guess, one question. Is, is Mr. O'Leary speaking as a citizen or as a select board member? Because I, I know I, I guess I assume, Mr. Chair, but I guess, you know, I heard him for thirty-four minutes at the CPC meeting, sitting over there, but he awfully spoke like a select board member. So I'm just kinda curious as to how this works with citizen petition, but he's really speaking as a select board member.
Select board member, right?
I'm speaking as Steve O'Leary, who happens to be a select board member and a citizen and voter of the town in our thread. I can't separate myself from either one of them, and I don't have, and I can't choose which way to do. When it comes to the conflict of interest laws, the only, the only thing that you have to do is, if there's a financial interest, personal financial interest, you'll see me recuse myself, and therefore I won't deliberate with the board. This impacts more than ten percent of the community, this impacts the entire community, so therefore you can, there's no conflict of interest. I have a position on it, and again, I happen to offer it because I was concerned that this board and the planning commission wouldn't offer the town an opportunity to do so, and that's what I've done. I am a member of the select board, and I'll be offering an opinion as a member of the select board for whether we should be recommending it to town meeting or not. I will also be speaking and voting as a, as a resident like everybody else, just like yourself. So I can't divorce myself from the positions that I have, like all of us, we're all residents, we're all members of the board.
First time this came up was mid-two thousand and twenty-three, then, because we got clarification early two thousand and twenty-four, and my opinion hasn't changed. I do not like this law. I think it's unfair. I think that people move to whatever community they choose to move to because either they don't care what goes on and they're fine with it, or because they like it a certain way, and I'll, you know, saying that aloud. However, I also don't believe in fighting losing battles, and the state since last October has shown me exactly what they do. Whenever there's a gotcha moment where somebody figures out a way to stop them, temporarily, they come out with a way to offset it, and I learned this the hard way when we were fighting the forty B and twenty L, where we were winning, and literally, the state changed a rule mid-course to say, now you lost. And literally, and there was nothing we could do. We went to appeal, we got laughed at, like, you can't appeal it. So here, in the interest that I still think that, again, I don't believe, and maybe this is just because of what I do in business and I can't afford it, I don't believe in symbolic victories, because at the end, you can't put the symbol in a bank account. And the way I see it is that the state, one way or the other, whether it's this year or next year, especially since once again, our representatives have tried to make some hay and move things around, and they're getting ignored in their own conference, this is happening in the last couple of weeks. This is something that we unfortunately have to live with, and I do agree that on a, a ground of, I don't wanna use the word morally, but like, how I feel about it, I, I don't like it, but at the same time, it is not Vincenzo Studo's personal bank account. If it was my money and I wanted to fight an uphill battle and cut the check, and it was all my discretion, that's on me. I can, if I wanna use my money for that, I can. But I can't sit here and feel like we can't win this at the end. I'm not saying you can't win a couple of battles here and there, but if I think we can't win the war, then sacri, like, even potentially, because I'm not as sanguine on it as some others where we're gonna lose everything under the sun, but even a potential cost that I think at the end of the day is just so we can say we fought the good fight, that's just not how I'm built. So I will be supporting this. And we do have, I will take a final comment before the vote, because we are in the vote right now, so. Mrs. Gonzalez, you wanna say anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Massey, please.
The motion that I would plan to make at town meeting, I would support this, because I think that if Mr. O'Leary's petition goes through with age fifty-five plus, then you're right, this is, this is a layup. And, you know, recently I've been having some discussions with people that, you know, if there is a lot of grants on the table, is it worth the fight separately? Is it, is it worth opening up the possibility of changing your mind for unity in the town? I think to me, yes, I hate, I hate to see people at each other's throats, but I do think that Mr. O'Leary's petition will not go through the state ultimately, so I, I can't, I can't say yes to this, but ultimately, I would say yes to a motion. can't, I can't say yes to this, but ultimately, I would say yes to a motion being added, or language being added at the end to say, if not accepted by the state, that we will go back to the people in North Reading.
That's something we consider on the floor that night. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed?
Really, we should do roll calls, such as she's...
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Gonzalez, we're going to do roll call. Mr. O'Leary, await, and Mr. Gilberto, I was just close.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just feel an obligation, just from, from Mr. Massey saying more than anything else. I'm not sure how that discussion would go on town meeting in terms of an amendment to obligate or not obligate a select board to town meeting one way or the other. I think that's something we'd have to look at language and decide with the moderator.
Well, no, I'd rather know now, because I, you guys know better than I do, I'm trying, you, you certainly understand what I'm trying to do. My intention, I would rather not be caught off guard and say, oops, too late, Mr. Massey, town meeting time, and you can't figure, I'd rather not that happen.
I think an amendment to strike language from what's been proposed would certainly be in order and would be submitted to a vote at town meeting. I think it's the conditioning that I, I have no way of knowing how the moderator would roll, would rule on it, or how it would be enforced, so I just feel an obligation, that's all.
So it would be allowed if Mr. Massey does it? It could be allowed, just based on whether the moderator allows the, on the floor?
Again, the motion, I think I heard you had concerns about language that was added in here, taking that language out.
No, my, my concern is, I think we're going to submit this, and the state's going to say, rejected, doesn't work, it goes against our, our purpose. And then I don't want North Reading to say, thank you for your yes vote, we're just going to take the parts that got taken away by the state and still move forward. No, people in North Reading voted for this. If this gets rejected, I'd like it to go back to town meeting with a new plan.
If I can help, so to say.
Could I, just off from, so... It's possible that the Attorney General could remand something back to be considered. I haven't seen that happen. They could offer a suggestion, they could approve it and strike language from it, I have that's, I think, a possibility too. The, the thing I'm trying to be upfront about is, a vote taken at town meeting that would potentially be intending to bind the town one way or the other, I'm just not sure how that would go, or that that could be done, that, that's all I'm trying to say. And maybe I'm misunderstanding what's being suggested, but I just don't want, I don't want the vote to be taken and then that happens and you don't...
I mean, that's, that's why I was trying to put the motion in here, but...
But we can't do it here.
But why not? I truly don't understand why not.
The, the one thing I am certain of is, we, we could not amend what has been submitted for the petition here in this form. That would have to happen at a town meeting.
Mr. O'Leary?
You can amend it if it's, if you're the sponsor, and before it's published in the warrant. So if this were sponsored by the select board, we could change the language up until tonight, and, so that we couldn't change it. So if the select board want to vote tonight to sponsor this, you could do it and then strike that language. Now, as far as asking town meeting to have a caveat in there that, you know, if the state strikes this down, then it must come back to town meeting, that, again, I can tell you as, as a moderator, fifteen years' worth, and also...
Very unbiased, I see what's coming, it's very unbiased.
No, 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 I'm just telling you from experience, you know, for fifteen years of being moderator, and also fifteen years, fifteen years of hanging around and going to town meetings, what it would be, it'd strictly be an advisory to the board to bring it back, if the strikes, if the town strikes it down. You can't obligate it to come back. So it would just be, the moderator could entertain it as an advisory motion to the board, certainly the Planning Commission, should this happen. So I just want to be upfront in favor of you. So, I mean, if you don't like the language here, and you don't, and you think, if you like the language with the fifty-five plus, and it was going to be approved that way, I think the message I got was, you bite the bullet, hold your nose, and say, okay, I'm in favor of it. There is a potential that the state can just strike, say, everything's in compliance except for this, and say, thank you for coming to compliance. No doubt, that's, that's a possibility, that is a possibility. But we can't...
But that's not what people voted on.
No, I understand, I get you, no, I understand. I understand, and if people have that reservation concern, then don't vote for it, I, you know, that's okay, I understand that, I understand.
So I don't, I don't want, I don't want political games to happen in the background of how I should, how I should make a motion, when it should be, because they're going to catch me off guard.
Again, I'm telling you right up front.
I'm trying, you understand my intentions?
I, I do, I do.
Make sure there's no, make sure there's no game at town meeting, to be honest with you.
I hear what you're saying, is that you're in favor of this, you hold your nose if it's going to be okay. You have reservations as to whether or not that language is conflicting with what the statute says. We've been told by council that she believes that it would pass muster. That's all I can go by. And to allay the people's concerns, because it was a concern, legitimate concern, I, yeah, I'm disagreeing with them, you know.
I guess that's why the whole suitable for families would maybe be a question for town council.
There are a lot of people, there are a lot of people over fifty-five, there are a lot of people over fifty-five that are raising their grandchildren, a lot of, those are families. But anyway, that being said, I get what you're saying, I understand. So, and I can only do what I can do here, and I can only address what I felt was a need, and that's all I'm doing. And so I can't guarantee what the state's going to do.
After Mr. Gilberto speaks, we're gonna, one way or the other, we have to vote on this, because we're only on Article One, and I'm assuming the next one's a part of it so we can go quickly, but we do have a, a budget hearing at eight, which is probably going to be nine. Mr. Gilberto?
Do you know the other thing I would just add to, that might help with, I think, Mr. Massey, what you might be concerned about is, there is a clause in here, a separability clause, that you could possibly be modifying through a town meeting and maybe achieve what you're looking to do. But I get, I just, I don't want you to take the vote with an expectation that then, you know, that expectation is not, you know, not able to be fulfilled. But, you know, the separability clause, I'll just read it quickly for those who don't have it in front of them. In the event that one or more of the provisions of this article are determined to be illegal or unenforceable by court of competent jurisdiction, then the illegality or unenforceability of any such provision shall not affect the validity of any other provision of this article, which remains in full force and effect. So that's talking about a court, it's not talking about the Attorney General, so I mean, I guess you could maybe offer a motion that would expand that. I don't know where that would go, but that might be an avenue, so.
Wow, that really cleared things up.
No, no, it's frustrating, it's frustrating. I get it.
No, it's kind of frustrating.
I find it frustrating.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez, this is for your vote.
Yes, I, I will be voting no.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
No.
Chair's aye. And then Article, Article Two and Three is on the same thing, so hopefully that's quick. And then Article Four is a separate thing we, we need to, we can discuss, because that's a little different. Mr. Massey, whenever you're prepared.
Mr. Chair, through you, Mr. Gilberto, can you put me in contact with town council to help me craft what I'm, I'm getting at here?
Certainly, at least as a start to discuss the issue, and then from there we can take it, but yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Two, citizens petition to amend code zoning by laws, changes to site plan review, Article seventeen.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner.
To be clear, it's Article Two, I think the numbers may not have been changed.
Sorry, next, Article Two. No, no, can, can we amend it to say Article Two?
No, no, it's, site plan review is Article seventeen.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're reading the title.
Yeah.
Seventeen.
Motion, any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. Massey?
No.
Chair's aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Three, citizens petition to amend code zoning by laws, section two hundred dash thirty, zoning act.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Massey? Mrs. Gonzalez?
No.
Chair's aye. So for Article Four, Mr. Massey, you can read it, and then we'll discuss it, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to not recommend Article Four, citizens petition to amend North Reading zoning by laws, two hundred dash sixty-one, attachment one.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have, might give a brief description before, because I was kind of caught off guard.
Sure, yeah, it's a great point. So my recommendation would be to not recommend, and that is based upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission, to not recommend as well, which will be included in the warrant. This is an article that would have changed zoning for residential zone D to decrease the amount of square footage required for creating a house lot from a hundred and twenty thousand to forty thousand square feet. This heard a hearing by the Planning Commission two weeks ago, they voted not to recommend it. I think the petitioner indicated that, as they wrote in the, in the draft, that it's intended to align with the residential zone R that surrounds on nearly all four sides of the residential zone D district, to align with the square footage at forty thousand square feet. But I know the Planning Commission heard quite a bit of rejection at the hearing, and it would be my recommendation that they will move not to recommend it.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary, any of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was at the hearing too, and it was like, none of the residents in the neighborhood, other than the petitioner was in favor of it, three acres zoning versus one acre zoning, and he just had too much lawn to mow and took care of it, and thought that was better for another house, and neighbors didn't concur. In addition to that, the reason that the zoning is up there, there was some very legitimate reasons as far as topography and act of protection and all the rest as to why it was that way. So I, I think when he left the meeting, I, I wouldn't be surprised if he doesn't make a motion or makes a motion to withdraw or to pass over.
He was waving the white flag.
Oh, he waved the white flag.
Mr. Matt, I don't, it's Matt, I know.
No, again, the CPC voted again, it's a...
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
All set.
Okay.
Which is not recommend.
So yeah, we're voting yes.
Yeah, yeah, recommend.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner? Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
And the chair's aye. Yeah, Mr. Gilberto, maybe just, yeah, sorry, I dumped it on that one, Mr. Massey, so give the description, and then Mr. Massey will read the motion.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, for the first three articles, we will write in the warrant that the select board voted to recommend by a vote of three to two.
Correct.
And then for Article Four, it will be to the state number.
Correct.
Article Five, the budget amendment, at this time at Cleveland, we do not have any recommended budget amendments at this point for the shortfall for the, what ended up being the vocational school assessment by a few thousand dollars that will handle the reserve fund transfer, but no actual coming in required. I would recommend that the board vote to recommend that town meeting, and that's a way for us to hold that article open, because there's still another five or so weeks, four weeks, before town meeting would occur, so we have something that comes up. At least it makes, at least town meeting will notice that, hey, there could be something that comes, but there's nothing forecasted at this point, and we'll put that into the description as well.
Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article Five, fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget amendment.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
Just curious, sort of final numbers from, nobody spoke, is it the project or...
I believe it was, was it the...
No, it was the number of students.
Yeah, it was the number of students, it wasn't a project.
It wasn't a full student, so it might have been like the special ed portion.
Correct, yeah.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Massey? Chair's aye.
You can't recommend the town meeting.
Technically, you can recommend a recommended town meeting today.
Similarly, Article Six, fiscal year twenty-five capital budget amendment, we are not anticipating any amendments to that capital budget for this current year, so we would recommend that the board vote to recommend passing over Article Six.
Mr. Chairman, I move to pass, recommend, Mr. Chairman, I, I move to recommend passing over Article Six, fiscal year twenty twenty-five capital budget amendment.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And the chair's aye.
Mr. Chairman, Article Seven, funding the fiscal year twenty twenty-five snow and ice deficit to finance correct where we land with, if it's a final number.
Three hundred and seventy-four thousand from free cash.
Three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars funded as part of our financial plan from free cash, and my recommendation to the board would be to vote to recommend the article.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Seven, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, snow on ice deficit.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And the chair's aye.
Article Eight, fiscal year twenty-five, transfer into the capital improvement stabilization fund, this is an important action that needs to take place ahead of our approval of the fiscal year twenty-six operating budget, because we will be transferring funds in for debt service from this account, the dollar amount, this is the amount, please.
One million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and five dollars from free cash.
And my recommendation, we can vote to recommend, from free cash, great. To be clear, what happens with this is we transfer from currently available free cash into this account, it stays there for the next eight or so articles, we get to fiscal year twenty-six operating budget under Article Sixteen, and when we vote to approve, that will be a portion of funding for debt service for the FY twenty-six budget. So transfer in, transfer out, does not reduce the balance.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Eight, fiscal year twenty-five, appropriate or transfer funds to capital improvement stabilization fund.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Chair's aye.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Article Nine, we are not anticipating recommending a transfer into the OPEB fund under the fiscal year twenty twenty-five actions, but we are recommending it as part of the fiscal year twenty-six financing plan, so there's a similar article later on in the warrant, and we will be asking you to vote to recommend raising and appropriating funding for it. For this article, my recommendation is that we pass over the article.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend passing over Article Nine, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, appropriate or transfer funds to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Massey? And the chair's aye.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Article Ten, recommending transfer for funds into the stabilization fund, I would recommend a transfer of the amount.
Three hundred and fifty thousand from free cash.
So we would ask the board to vote to recommend this article as part of our financing plan going into this meeting, continuing, continuing to build on the balance in that fund, the balance of the funds around four million, is that right?
Roughly five million, just over five million.
And my recommendation would be to vote to recommend the article.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Ten, Fiscally Year Twenty Five, Appropriate or Transfer Funds to Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Article Eleven, Appropriating Funds to the Solid Waste Stabilization Fund. This is an article we annually have on to potentially transfer any surplus funds that are projected to be available in this current year's budget into the fund. What we've been doing in recent years, and it will be my recommendation here, is actually waiting until the fiscal year ends. That balance or surplus to be made will become part of free cash and make that transfer at the October town meeting. So the funding gets back to where it needs to. We're able to do an exact amount rather than a projection that we're making with still nine weeks left, no, seven weeks left in the fiscal year. So my recommendation of this article would be to pass over the article, understanding that the transfer will be made if there is a balance available at October town meeting.
This is Article Eleven.
You're correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Eleven, Fiscally Year Twenty Five, Appropriate or Transfer Funds to Solid Waste.
I recommend passing over, sorry, Mr. Massey.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend passing over Article Eleven, Fiscally Year Twenty Five, Appropriate or Transfer Funds to Solid Waste Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
The chair is aye.
Article Twelve, Appropriating Transferring Funds to the Water Stabilization Fund. This is a similar article where we have tried to work and see whether or not we have funding that we need to be transferring during the course of this year. Do we have a balance?
We have a retained earnings balance that was certified in the fall, so five hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
My recommendation would be that we recommend this article and make that transfer. We don't need to rely on any of that funding for capital, right?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Twelve, Fiscally Year Twenty Twenty Five, Appropriate or Transfer Funds to Water Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
The chair is aye.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Article Thirteen, Transfer Funds in the Current Fiscal Year to the Participating Funding Arrangement. This is similar to how we handle solid waste. We generally make it during the fall. We left it on in case we wanted to transfer any money. I do think for our practice moving forward, we should consider not having this article once we've made the transfer. So for example, for Fiscally Year Twenty Six, if we make the transfer in October as would be recommended, the advantage will know the exact amount rather than making a projection. If we were to do that, I don't think we need a year from now to have this article under the Fiscally Year Twenty Six. Fortunately, we said, we said, didn't deal with it in the following, October. So my recommendation for this article is to recommend passing over.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend passing over Article Thirteen, Fiscally Year Twenty Twenty Five, Appropriate or Transfer Funds to Participating Funding Arrangement Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Article Fourteen, Fiscally Year Twenty Five, Appropriating and Transferring Funds to the School District Reserve Fund for unanticipated unbudgeted costs for special education, out-of-district tuition, or transportation. We have a request, this was submitted by the school committee, and it's a fund that is available to stabilize unforeseen costs during the course of the fiscal year. It's done so by a vote jointly of the school committee and the select board. If not, need to withdraw from this account, I think since it's been set up, which is roughly six or so years ago. And we're in this dollar amount that we're paying for that.
One hundred thousand from free cash.
A hundred thousand dollars transferred, yeah. My recommendation would be to vote to recommend the article. This is for a hundred thousand dollars. Hundred thousand dollars in free cash. Take notice, we have been that funded.
I want to say four hundred and sixty-seven thousand?
Four hundred and sixty-seven?
We've put a little bit in over the past couple of years, not every year, but most years. Haven't had to withdraw from it yet. Hopefully, we don't have to, but obviously, that's always a possibility.
And this is the same purpose we funded four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run on toll?
No, that was.
We only do a hundred to a hundred and fifty a year?
Not talking rate appropriate. Are you talking, so we did appropriate additional funding in the school operating budget and also to public safety of overtime from, I think from new growth? Is that what you referred to?
No, there was something at town meeting to, well, four hundred change, thousand dollars for special education and transportation.
I'm reading all of that, I pull up my, that was from October, you believe, Mr. Massey?
I believe so.
So I am seeing a number close to that, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars appropriated from raising appropriate for the school, for public schools. So it's three hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-two for special education tuition and fifty thousand dollars for student services. And that was also, it was eighty thousand dollars for place overtime and fifty thousand dollars for fire overtime. We also put sixty-eight thousand, fifty-two dollars to go in the reserve fund.
Right, that was all from the growth?
All, it was all the growth, right. So that actually went into this current year's school apartment operating budget funding that you're asking about. This transfer would go into the stabilization fund and would be subject to a vote of the select board and the school committee to be extended. But you respond on a dollar amount, just one thousand dollars. It was just, it was raised appropriate in the operating budget.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Fourteen, Fiscally Year Twenty Five, Appropriate or Transfer Funds to School District Reserve Fund for Unanticipated Unbudgeted Costs for Special Education, Out-of-District Tuition, and Transportation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion?
Just to confirm, out-of-district tuition, is that, is that Notties vote, is that Essex, is that Austin Prep, is that, I mean?
So it's not, I believe it's for individuals who are in school, not in one of those, so we have a separate appropriation for those in the operating budget. There may be a reason, you know, based on special education plan, that they're not able to be educated in public schools. They may vote in other schools. I don't believe it's customer only, one of those schools. It might be private school. When I say private, authorized to special education. That's the extent I can provide at hand, so at least right now.
Understood, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Just confirm, I'm sorry. Do you want to second that?
Mr. Wallner?
Sorry?
You seconded the motion?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Article Fifteen, which is Fiscally Year Twenty Twenty Five, Fire Station Planning. We want to kind of be thoughtful about how to handle this. We are anticipating an expense not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Is that if we had the right number for that, Mr. Massey? The wording would not find us by a number, and we could certainly print that number in there. Our hope is that the board will vote to recommend the article based upon the work at the Fire Station Building Committee. We'll have the advantage of knowing what the proposals look like, because we are out of bid for this project right now. So before we actually get to town meeting for an actual vote, we'll know whether our funding amount is real or not. But the funding source is free cash for two hundred thousand dollars, and we would ask the board to vote to recommend the article. Sponsored by the select board, but as you know, it's at the request of the Fire Station Building Committee. And I'll just ask, Mr. Chairman, do you have anything to add?
No, just to confirm that out of bid, meaning not construction, out of bid as in request for qualifications for design.
Yes, thank you for that amendment.
And this is just following through on what the town voted in June to move forward a different direction for a fire station project, which would include looking into feasibility of the West Side Fire Station as well as looking into the existing plans of the existing station and seeing what we can value from there. Thank you. Try to recommend, oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I move to recommend Article Fifteen, Fiscally Year Twenty Twenty Five, Fire Station Planning.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Chair is aye.
One of the rare moments where I'm a member of the committee as well, but I'll just say, I think we appreciate the board's support and the vote here today for the work that's gone on. I recognize that Abby's over there, and Mr. Massey, John, the project chief was here earlier. A lot of work has been happening, a lot of meetings over the past two months to try to continue moving this forward and not, you know, to the extent we can, not miss a beat. Thank you, Mike. Thanks. Article Sixteen, the Fiscally Year Twenty Twenty Six Operating Budget. This would be the town's budget for Fiscally Year Twenty Twenty Six, which at this point in time is balanced, unfortunately, through a series of required reductions, both for municipal departments and the school department in order to get balanced within the cap that's in place under Proposition Two and a Half. But the budget that you've heard a lot about, and we'll hear more about in the budget hearing, is in fact balanced at this point in time with very little margin, no margin in it at this point. But there will be impacts, and we'll talk more about that in the budget hearing. But at this point, our, our recommendation would be that the select board vote to recommend Article Sixteen.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Mr. Gobert, any chance we can, we had some cuts proposed to us. We didn't work through too productive at the fore yet during those couple sessions, but can you send us those final cuts that we made?
I think I can.
Because the select board never made any recommendations. I mean, we had some discussions and some consensus, but I just didn't, we never got the final.
Sure, so they'll be in the budget hearing that's going to occur momentarily, so, yeah, we can, totally, we'll put them out there for conveyance.
Thank you. My recommendation would be to vote to recommend the article.
No, the motion.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I move to recommend Article Sixteen, Fiscally Year Twenty Twenty Six Operating Budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
The chair is aye.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Article Seventeen is complimentary to the Fiscally Year Twenty Six Operating Budget. Article Sixteen is funding for one-time recruit and paramedic training for the fire department. This is the estimated number is?
The total is a hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred dollars, with a hundred and eight thousand, four hundred coming from free cash and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred coming from the ambulance reserve.
So this is funding that is directly associated with the expansion of staffing in the fire department. We talked about the four positions that are currently funded and vacant, and the four that are going to be funded for Twenty Twenty Six. So this funding would be available to help with the recruiting paramedic training cost with those potential candidates, and our recommendation is that the board vote to recommend Article Seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Seventeen, Fiscally Year Twenty Twenty Six, One-Time Fire Department Recruit and Paramedic Training.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question, is this two or four?
So this is funding for the four additional, right? This is the previous article for the other, the four that are, so we have four that are vacant right now that you're going to hear in the T E report, I'll be requesting a civil service list to fill. The plan is to fill, is to request that same list for an additional four in October. So that would fund the total of, that would, that would get us an hiring process for a total of eight positions. This funding would be the second tranche of funding that would make sure we got funding in place for all eight positions. Is that right?
Yes, for the training, correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Article Eighteen, Fiscally Year Twenty Twenty Six Capital Expenditures. And there should have been in the packet a copy of the listing of the capital articles as voted by the select board at the presentation on Article April, excuse me, fourteen, I have to re-.
April fourteen, yep.
April fourteen. So we have that listing in place, again intending to post that with a warrant. It would of course be included in a version of warrant that's mailed to our residents. To be clear, this author is, one of the funding sources is the authorization borrow, which is itemized here in the, in the article. For those projects that are contemplating, contemplated to be funded using borrowing, funding is noted on the listing. And our recommendation would be that the board vote to recommend Article Eighteen.
Just a quick question, if I'll make any amendments, is town meeting the time to do it?
In terms of the project listing? I would say based upon the board's prior vote on the capital plan on April fourteen, that probably is the best spot to do it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Eighteen, Fiscally Year Twenty Six Capital Expenditures.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question, would, I mean, theoretically, we could amend tonight if we have a majority of the board to support whatever you're thinking about. I don't know what you're thinking about, so.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still thinking about it.
Okay.
So I just gotta, I just gotta put it all together.
Chair, Mr. Chairman, through you, my only concern with that is, depending on what you're going to do, unless you're just shuffling, if you're asking for additional funds, the, by that point, there won't be any free cash left?
No, I wouldn't be asking for additional funds, just moving funds that are shown within the categories that are listed. I might create my own category.
So a potential new project?
New project, but move money out of something, move somewhere else. Can any resident do that?
So any resident could offer a motion, and how does the moderator react to it is a question. I can't think of an instance where a project has been proposed on town meeting, but be added to the list. And that may, that could be, that could be a challenge. I don't know, I'll leave it to the board, whether that would be able to occur. If you want, I mean, if you have a project, you have a dollar amount, it might be worth identifying it. Because I don't want to see you get caught in a situation where you can't offer it later.
I don't know, I've seen other board members make amendments kind of on the fly, even with capital improvement too, right?
There have been, yeah, but what, the amendments I can think of were to actually strike a project that was already listed, though, or strike a component of a project that was listed. So that's why I'm thinking, I think if you're thinking the sort of the, I don't want to see you get caught not being able to add it. Again, the moderator's not here, I don't want to speak for him, but I could see that being a potential option.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary, sorry, further discussion? No, Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
And chair is aye.
Article Nineteen is to authorize the naming of the multipurpose athletic field at the middle high school field complex for, that's the Charles Curici Senior Field. It was proposed by the school committee, and I know that there was some discussion, I believe, that happened in the athletic subcommittee as well along the way, and based upon that effort, my recommendation to the board would be to recommend both Article Nineteen and Twenty. To be clear, these fields are both under the care custody control of the school department, although in Parks Recreation, they did involve at different points of time. That's different than Arthur County Field, which is under the care custody control of the Hillview Commission, but is also maintained by Parks Recreation.
Mr. Massey, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Nineteen, Authorizing Naming of the Multipurpose Athletic Fields.
Second.
Doesn't even say his name.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion?
Sure.
Well deserved. Talk about multipurpose. I assert multipurposeism, still continues to serve. This is a great tribute, good idea.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
The chair is aye. The chair is aye.
Article twenty, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article twenty, authorize naming of softball fields.
Second.
Softball field at Northwood, next one.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner, any further discussion? None, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair is aye. Article twenty-one, correct, we have representatives from Hillview, Mr. Gilberto.
There are representatives of the commission here, and I'm not sure who's going to draw the short straw to describe the project, but you'll have to go up and join us here. You can take a seat right there.
Sure.
Lou DeFranzo, a member of the Hillview Commission. We're at a critical juncture after quite a bit of deliberation. Been a member of the commission for, I think this is somewhat very term. This has been the one issue that has really taken on the most energy and most discussion and consideration. So I'm quite impressed with our, with our group and our effort. We didn't start in the same place, but after a thorough process, we arrived in the same place. We're at a real critical juncture because our bonding capacity is starting to become available. And over the forty-plus years that the commission's been in service for the community, we've bonded nineteen million dollars' worth of funding over that period of time and done some nice things for the community. And we obviously do that by running the golf course, really, and having the golf course generate revenue, which we then use to try to find the right purposes in the community, to improve the community in accordance with our charter. As we've been doing that, we have, we're coming to an intersection where, while our bonding is coming down, we're noticing that our expenses, as it relates to the building, have been going up. And so over a year ago, we embarked on a study to figure out what to do with the building because we were finding it to be an antiquated building, very limited utility to the commissions of the town. And we really had to do some hard thinking about what to do with the building, which historically, as you probably know, has been run as a function facility. We've had several different operators. During COVID, we lost our most recent operator as a hospitality function business. We, subsequently, we have gained a tenant, but that tenant largely is, you know, using it for a little bit of a different purpose. And really, the rent, the rent that we collect doesn't cover the overhead of the building. And the building is, as I said earlier, antiquated and in quite state disrepair. We spent a lot of the commission's money on repairing the building, most notably the roofs. Mr. Karuji has spent a fair amount of weekends and times trying to keep the place dry and keep it functional. Had repeat problems with water in the ballroom and in the other parts of the building. So we embarked on a study to figure out how to make the building watertight. And as we did that, you might recall, we came and asked for some bonding capacity, which was approved last year. And we were stepping down the path of looking at the building and trying to make it weather tight and to do the roof. As we started to do that project, we quickly realized that it was going to take up a tremendous amount of our bonding capacity for probably the next five to ten years. It was going to be over two, probably three million dollars, which, which would have taken the ability of us to do other things in the town away from us for quite the immediate future, certainly. So we have considered alternatives, and the alternative that we've arrived at, looking at the building, looking at its utility to the commission and to the community, we have decided that we'd like to pursue a demolition of this building in a phase set of projects. We're going to look at raising the function facility. And we are going to, that would be the first phase. We're asking for, we've gone out and got some pricing and some quotes on that. We are pretty confident that we can accomplish the first phase for less than a million dollars, somewhere between eight hundred and a million dollars. We're looking at asking for support for bonding, half million dollars, which we would pay back fairly quickly. And then we were going on the other balance of the project to demolish the building out of our reserves, which we have, as you know, the Hopeview is self-sufficient, has been self-sufficient from day one. It's not funded with taxpayer money. And in keeping with that purpose, we feel that this is the most prudent path forward for preserving the Hillview enterprise for the benefit of the community long-term. The easy answer may have been to put a Band-Aid on the building, to take down that funding that we initially got approved at town meeting a year ago, and then we would have been paying off that bond for the next number of years and not getting to do some things. We feel that a more brave decision and a more forward-thinking and responsible decision is to bite the bullet and repurpose the facility, preserve the, what we do earn money on, and over time to move to a smaller facility that begins to bring the enterprise property at the golf course into a modern state and preserve that golden goose, if you will, that generates the money so we can do some nice things in the future. So that's where we're at.
Mr. O'Leary, do you want to add anything as the liaison before I go to the other members?
No, I mean, again, I've been involved since inception too, thirty-seven years ago, with the taking and spent twelve years on the commission myself. But the facility itself really was mostly for a number of years, a break-even basis. And now in recent years, it's become a cost center rather than a break-even. And in addition to that, maintaining it, trying to bring it back up to snuff, is just going to be fusing up the reserves and the bonding capacity at the expense of future expansion of the facility itself and what can be done in the community, which they've been continually doing. About every twelve to fifteen years, the commission is able to have their bonding capacity come down to a point where they can take on a project. I mean, first one, of course, is Zips Truville Park and the development of it. That took a lot of years to get to that point after they paid down the debt on the purchase of the property itself. And then twelve, fifteen years ago, took on the high school football field under the enterprise and paid for that. You know, so it's about every twelve to fifteen years, as the bonding capacity drops off, that they can, they can do things. So we're at a point now where last year, we paid forward and asked for the two-point-six million dollars for the roof, basically patched the building up, that didn't address any of the other infrastructure concerns that are with the building, the utility of the building itself. But it was to maintain the facility and get a roof on it and prevent it from leaking. The commission, in their wisdom, again, through a lot of discussion, as Lou pointed out, they didn't start out as a unified group here, some have some affinity for the building and, you know, with the historical nature of the building itself or from an authority standpoint, when people remember those Red Hill Country Club and still see the RH on the, on the chimneys. And, you know, reminiscing about things, but when it comes down to a return on investment, it isn't there. So the commission, again, spent an ordinary amount of time and resources themselves, time to look at really what's the functionality of it and what's the return to the community on it. And it come to a united conclusion at this point, it took a lot of discussion. And we congratulated, instead of just taking the easy route, which is to spend the two-point-six million dollars and patch the roof and let the next commission attend to twelve, fifteen years and now worry about it, they decided to take it on now. As I've been explaining to the board over the last several months, we'll be here to answer the questions and talk to you about the deliberations and how they came to that conclusion. And that's why they're here this evening and looking to take some action at June Town Meeting. So again, I appreciate the approach that they've taken. I endorse it and I, and I support their conclusions at this point, so. But they're here to answer any questions that the members of the board have at this point. And they'll be, certainly, they're going to have a public hearing April.
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth. They're going to have a public hearing themselves, and then there'll also be our public hearing later on in the month to answer any questions from the general public. Mrs. Gonzalez, any questions?
No, just a comment, you know, it is bittersweet, you know. It's been a great source of functionality for the town, you know, a lot of great fun things, Valentine parties and, you know, father-daughter dance one time. I mean, just, just a lot of memories in that building. And, you know, I would be sad to see it go, but I understand completely, you know, what the commission has, the decision they've come to.
Mr. Wallner. Yeah, just, you know, you described taking it down, but what do you envision in its place? Can, can you even answer that, I don't know if you can answer that question.
We're at the infancy of figuring out what a phase two would look like, but we have done some preliminary action to figure out what we would do long-range. And what we're thinking about is putting a smaller structure that would house our administrative office over to the left of the pro shop on top of the cart barn, that would be the next step. And that would serve a couple of purposes, which are long-term visions that we have. One of them being to put that structure over the cart barn to make it waterproof. Currently, the water leaks down there and it damages our carts. Long-term, we would like to invest in electric carts and get away from gas-powered carts for environmental reasons. We're thinking about putting the structure there, which would make it watertight. We've talked to our consultants about that and having a roof, which should have some solar power, which we could use to, for energy for the, for the carts for the golf course and make it an environmentally friendly, friendlier course. So that's kind of the longer-term vision.
So no, no plan to have a function hall?
There's no immediate plan to do a function hall. You know, the, I guess, the feeling of the commission, I can just relay that, is that the function business for the community, as select person Gonzalez said, you know, there, I don't think there's anybody in town who didn't spend some fantastic times there, it is bittersweet. But what we're seeing is that the current tenant that operates the function facility, there really are only a couple of functions a year that are really community-based at this point. It's not like it was certainly pre-COVID and then, I've been in town since, you know, the nineties and, you know, we used to have the father-daughter dance, the soccer dance and all sorts of festivities there, but it just, it doesn't happen, it's not used for bereavements, it's not used for community events. It's just changed, and that's the function, I think, of the way our culture has moved in, the operators that we've had. So, yeah, we had the last, the last real hospitality operator that we had, we had them invest nearly a million dollars downstairs, building on a bar and a restaurant, and they walked away from that investment. They couldn't get it to run. Couldn't make money out of it.
That means it's been our, it is our, been our function hall, but won't be there.
Yeah.
So that is a regret.
Yeah, it is, and, you know, one of the dangers that if you sit there responsibly, as we do, I think, as commissioners, we also have to look at what happens if, if we were to spend the two-point-six, put a roof on it, and then we don't have a tenant. We put that building out for bid and got zero people to bid to win and operate that thing a couple of times. If we get caught with that building with no tenant in it whatsoever, it could be condemned, it could be an insurance problem, it's going to be a real problem for, for the commission of the town.
What about senior center?
Thank you.
Your turn.
What about senior center?
What I say?
What's up to the town?
The restrictions? George Stack, I'm almost old. Original member of the study committee in eighty-six, eighty-seven, a member of the commission since eighty-eight. And I was of the opposition to remove this building. It's part of me. I remember our first tenant, we had for twenty-six years, and it was a thriving business, Christmas, Easter, it packed the place. He was the only bidder originally, he lasted twenty-six years. After him, we had one bid, this Pat Lee, who owned the hot shoe. He lasted five years, he lasted about six months with the downstairs because it wasn't profitable. He left, we had no bidders. And one day I got a call that Nick Eba of the Forty B fame, he, he decided he'd come in and take over the building and he was going to make a run of it. He invested a great amount of money. We were forced to put in a three-hundred-thousand-dollar kitchen downstairs, which I will never get over, but, but is there. And he left, and we had no bidders. And then ironically, the people who were in the building now were sitting next to his wife at a party, who said, well, they run this big fancy stuff for girls who turn fifteen, and they had a wedding there yesterday. But they aren't in the hospitality business in that sense. And they heard about our place, and we got the word that they were interested in. So we, we brought them in, they've been here a few years, they've done well with what they're doing, but it's, it's not what it is. The building's a nightmare, it was a nightmare the day we took the property. First thing we heard was the roof leaks. There's five separate roofs on that property, they're not bonded together. It's leaked, and it's leaked, and if you all like to come, you can see the manuals and the amount of work of the roofers who came in, the companies that came in, all the work we did and probably spent a million and a half dollars on that roof over these years. The water leaks downstairs, it comes in, it goes into the boiler room, it goes around, it comes in from the street. Where it comes in from, we don't know. It comes in from the, from where the hydrants are, maybe. It did one time, flooded out the whole place. They have a two-day fire watch because the building was, was wet. So it's, it's, it's a disaster. The old building is from the sixteen hundreds, tried originally to give it to the historical society, they refused it. We had, we had to spend money and bring in a company and jack the building up. It was sinking, has the original, where do they go, I'm wondering?
Timber.
Timber, timber in it. Anybody wants it? Feel free, you can cut it off and take it with you. So I, I was the last because it's so much a part of me. But in reality, it has to go, and what will come, and I was very hesitant to do it, and I was very concerned about, so we get it out of the way, Regulation ninety-seven, or Article ninety-seven, because in the taking order, it said we took the property and all the structures with it. And so I requested a ruling from town council before we come before you tonight. And, and we got it, and he has given us the consent to his interpretation. His, the building was never meant to be maintained, you know, if it became, if it was abandoned, we'd be tearing it down. And at another point, you had a company come around to evaluate all the structures in town. And they came to Hillview, and the poor lady got lost downstairs, it's like a maze, and I had to get down and find her. And we thought, we thought, we thought there'd be great interest in that company saying, oh, you know, the town should salvage this place and maybe fund it, you know, we could take a gift. And it wasn't so, it said they sent us a letter back, basically condemning the building. So it has no, it has no.
Utility.
It has, it has no value right now. And, and so what we would do is we knock it down, be nice landscape would be great, we, we don't know what we do. And you know what, it'll be for future people to decide what to do. And it's time for future people to start thinking about what they'd like to do in town. We haven't heard a word from anybody about projects, doing anything for years now, you know. But we're, we're open to suggestions, you know, you go to the LUC, you throw your pitch, they like it, they're our clearinghouse, they come to us, and we look to see if we fund it. But that's not for tomorrow or the next day, that's for like a few years down the road. But, but we're there, so will the building be lost? We're going to town meeting for a vote. If the vote is realistic and we pitch it how bad it is, if it's an emotional vote, who knows what's going to happen? Because that, that is so much a part of the town and authority. And think of all the people who moved in here since we took the property in nineteen eighty-eight. And to them, that's part of the town. So we're, we're going to have to have a real pitch about it, trying to sell it. So in the meantime, golf's good, draining out, you know, not good. And the building is not good, believe me. And I have to say, it, it took me a long time, but I did want that letter from town council stating that we're not limited under Rule ninety, is it rule or regulation?
Article ninety-seven.
Article ninety-seven, that controls everything above the enterprise property and what you can do and can't do with it. do and can't do with it. And, and I think everybody, especially on the boards, should understand all about that. So when people come to do things and I have to go and research it and tell them you can't do that, and they should all be familiar with Regulation 97. So anyways, that's it. And.
Thank you.
Came to you as, as, as our, as the people running the town, basically, with Michael and, and out of respect that you should hear first. And then on the 15th, you're welcome to come to our hearing where we'll have overlays and whatever you want. We'll have a pie chat, whatever you want. And, and then we will come to a town meeting.
Chuck, do you want to say something about the senior center?
You all done?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for explanation.
What was that?
Good evening. My, my name is Charles Carrucci, if you haven't heard it tonight. My job for the Hillview and on the commission was to maintain the building. And I can tell you, it's a work in progress every day up there between the plumbing, the heating, the water to the building, to all the bars, that go on up there. It's hard to, also very hard to find somebody at night to go up and unplug the drains when you got a puncture. That's probably one of the worst things to do. But getting back to somebody mentioned about a new building. Well, I would say probably years ago, we had a price when Pat Lee had the place and he went out and got an architect to design a building for us. And that came back at $10 million. To try and pay back that $10 million would be a high price to do that. So our, our idea is to leave this to the future that come on the Hillview committee, have the course, the course set, so that's ready to go, and then come up with some ideas later on. Right? Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Just a few questions. The 2.6 million that was approved for the roof last year, that was what funding source?
Bonding.
So that was bond? We haven't pulled that bond yet?
Nope.
So the demo for this building is, is come, is proposed to come out of funding source?
Part retained earnings, part bonding.
So.
The intention is paid off within, with it basically within a year. So borrow half of it right now, using the retained earnings and the other half.
But you got 2.6 million allocated to you, so I'm trying to.
That, that will be rescinded.
That's going to be rescinded.
If this passes, that will be rescinded. We'll never draw on that.
That'll be in October. We'll rescind it.
Is that Article 22?
Is that Article 22, Mike?
It is, yeah. It is, I'm sorry, yep. Yep. Rescind authorization.
And that was again, a move that we made.
No reference, no reference to Hillview?
So it's usually written, it's usually written as a blanket for which any capital project that needs to be rescinded could be proposed. We can put it in the description if we'd like to identify that. We certainly put some more information, but I wouldn't recommend limiting it to that project.
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, not to get into Article 22, but I think it's, it connects the dots. That's all. But that certainly does clarify a lot of my questions. But I am a little bit confused as to why I would demoing a building without having a plan for what's going on.
Well, we do have a general plan. We have, we have a vision of what we want to do. I thought I outlined that for everybody. We're going to take this building down so that we don't have the burn and the responsibility because essentially, we'd be putting $2.6 million of capital into this business that is our current tenant. We're not sure that they're going to be around. So that would be like a real.
That's separate, that's separate.
Well, no, but that.
2.6 is separate.
No, that would be to what we'd need to do now in order to make the building watertight to keep the tenant.
I understand, but with this, what you're proposing to demo, that's what I'm getting at, is you're going to demo the building and then there's really the plan after that.
The plan after that would be, well, it's, it's, we don't have hard figures, but the plan as I outlined would be to put a structure over the cart barn to the left of the pro shop.
Yep.
For administrative offices, nothing in the $10 million range that was found out previously. We're talking about a modest building and a structure. And that would have a dual purpose of giving us our administrative offices, give us, giving us the space that we need that does give us utility out of the building today, and also making the cart barn watertight so that in the future, we can bring in those electric carts and go to the environmentally friendly carts. That's what we're, that's our vision. That's where we're going to do it.
That'll be the future town meeting. Whatever they're proposing will come to town meeting. Town meeting will determine what's going to happen there.
But that, but that, when you say there's no vision, that, that would be the vision of what we're doing in a.
Just like extending the current pro shop over?
Right.
Yes. I don't know, the, the pro shop has not had improvements done to it. That's been patched for a very long time. Also, that may need some improvements, but that's not something we've studied or prepared to bring forward right now.
I mean, shouldn't the, shouldn't the extension of the pro shop be done first? So you, now, I hold, one second. So you're planning to demo the building, but then you don't have a place for the administrative offices. Where are those going to go temporarily?
Temporarily, we're going to have a trailer. We're going to use a trailer on the site for the office.
And how much is that?
We looked into the.
It was $26,000 for a year.
$26,000 for a year.
For a year?
Yeah.
And how many people can fit in a trailer?
Small office, small office in the meetings.
Okay. $26,000 a year?
A year.
I mean, that's a, this is a real question.
For a year.
Yeah, we looked into it. Something we, something we investigated.
It's a real cost because ultimately that goes back to our budget.
What, and, no, no, it doesn't. I, I don't know if it does.
I guess ultimately it's the people's choice.
Well, the.
How to spend that money, right?
Well, no, the funds that we generate go into the Hillview Commission, right? They're town, right? But they're not available for town general purposes. We, we accumulate retained earnings and we basically bond projects and, and use our cash flow to cover our operating expenses and to fund the bonds that we flow to do the improvements that we do, right? So you're correct, that will be $26,000 a year expense that will come out of our cash, but that's temporary until we get transitioned into a new structure.
Is your plan to jump into the, to do the new structure right away? And you gotta, you gotta also understand, this comes to me like one time. Like all this plan is like, oh, by the way, and then we're just going to, and addition, it would be great for our board to be a little updated. I say it all the time, whether it's the liaison can continue to update us, but I'm just putting this out because this is the first time I'm hearing all of it. And I'm one that comes with questions anyways, so this is just gonna, you know.
Questions are welcome. I mean, this, this really, you know, as, as we said earlier, we didn't start here when we went down this path. This is something that became through the iterations of discussions and looking at the figures and looking at what the impact on the commission was going to be long-term. As I said at the outset, the easy thing for us to do would have been to just go through with what we had approved last year and just make the building watertight. That would have not solved the problem of a building that, that, and I quote from the, from the master plan that was submitted to the town in January.
Sir.
HKT?
I get it. I'm over the 2.6.
Okay, I'm, well, I'm just saying.
That's the next article, but I'm over that.
Okay, so once we decided that our, our plan was we weren't going to make, it wasn't a, a smart investment to put the commission's bonding capacity towards the building, we decided we can't maintain the building if we're not going to invest in it. So we looked into what the cost of demolition, demolishing the building would be. We decided that if we raise that building, we need to have a plan of what we're going to do at, at the property, right? And we've got a legal opinion from council that we can demolish the building. We don't have any obligation. We have to reconstruct the building. But our plan and our vision is Phase One would be to demolish this building. Phase Two will be to erect a administrative office over the cart barn with the aim of making the cart barn have utility for our electric carts as we transition, as we try to improve the golf course infrastructure so that it's here for years to come to generate the income that the Hillview Commission generates to do the things that the enterprise was set up to do 40-plus years ago.
Does the, where the carts go, does that have columns in the middle?
No.
No, it's wide open.
Has it, has it structural? I'm sorry. Second, I'm sorry. Has a structural engineer, look at that? Hold on.
Go ahead, Chuck.
I'm talking about the cart.
Yeah, you're talking about the cart barn. So we, we're at the very preliminary stage. We don't have a, a full study, but Mr. Carrucci can tell you what we have done about.
You have heard of the architect, Charles Carr?
What?
Have you heard of the architect?
So.
Now, you in the engineering business?
I am.
I am a standard project engineer.
They must not do schools.
I get all standing one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a project. All this project manager already on the job, who was going over everything that went on the tube. The cart barn will pull the building. We had an architect, look at that, structural engineer. We're not going to hire like we don't know where we're at. We hired somebody to guide us.
I know, I'm just asking.
Okay.
So we do have.
You know, I just want to say.
Don't insult us.
No, no, I just want to, time off. I, time off, Mr. Chair. I just want to, I just want to make something clear, very clear, is that I'm, I'm new to this and, and Mr. Carrucci here, this is the first time you've come here. I want to make very clear. I, hold on, time off. I ask a lot of questions. Nothing is insulting, Mr. Carrucci. What it is, is I'm trying to find out. I'm trying to follow the path, Mr. Carrucci, of where things are going. So my job as a selectman, Mr. Carrucci. Hold on one second. Mr. Carrucci, as a segment is to understand. Mr. Carrucci, I'm not, I'm not disrespecting you. I promise you. I promise you.
I watched today, give it to some of these people.
Mr. Carrucci, Mr. No, Mr. Chair, hold on one second. Mr. Carrucci?
Yes.
The goal of that was to ask the big picture, okay? So it is not your fault and it is not my fault, and I did not hear any tidbits about this project up until right now. So forgive me for asking when you're asking for six- and seven-figure projects for us to consider, for me to vote on to say yes. Forgive me.
You see the.
For me doing my job.
Am I ready, huh?
Look at that.
After Mr. Carrucci, please, George.
And when that came out.
Go ahead, please.
That's itself.
First of all, let's, let's, let's get the record straight. We are stewards of a project given in 1988 to do what we do. We determine projects, we determine costs, we determine bonding, we determine all of this. We bring it to town meeting. Town meeting's where we get our ransom. That, that's where we get our ransom.
Okay.
That's the only place we get our ransom.
Okay.
Your, your jurisdiction is to appoint us. The actual administration and running of the Hillview is through town meeting, only town meeting. I've been now, let's see, 38 years now, and I volunteered every member of the board of selectmen since that time to sit down with each person and go through the history and everything else. And Mr. Massey, I, I don't know you, but I got a call. You wanted to see the building on a Saturday or Sunday? I volunteered. Never heard a word. I got a, I got a call day before yesterday.
She's been, she did hear a word, but they had functions going on and therefore it wasn't feasible.
You want to see the building?
No, 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 no. I never got invited to walk the building. I never got, I never got invited.
No, you, I was told you asked.
He didn't have, he did.
I never got invited.
We didn't give him a date.
See the correct record?
Correct. No, he did ask for it. I tried to coordinate. We couldn't coordinate on the weekends because of the function facility was happening.
You want to see the building?
We were trying to get them. So he did, he did ask for it.
You want to know about the Hillview?
He did ask for it.
Okay, okay, hold on. So I'm, I'm just going to step in.
Go ahead.
Because now we got into who invited who and like telephone. Here's the bottom line. I, I'm going to summarize and we're going to take the vote. Okay? The bottom line is what I've heard is this. We had to spend 2.6 million, tenant leaves, and then we're on the hook for that. We don't have a choice but to spend it because we just don't, you can't have a condemned building. That, I'm, I'm kind of understanding that. Okay? And the alternative is we spend 800 to a million, 800,000 to a million, we bulldoze it, and then we decide what to do on it. But either way, it has to be for a purpose that is under what Hillview can spend the money on. I want to say that upfront because there's going to be people to leave this room thinking, who are going to go on Facebook and post that, you see, we can't use that money for named project here. So I just want to be clear on that, right? You said there's purposes we can spend that money on for Hillview.
Excuse me. Why don't we clarify the use of the Hillview Enterprise?
Please.
It's specifically known to be used by general government. When we did the turf field, I spent three hours on the phone with the department revenue because some person in town dropped a dime and said we were doing a general government project. And I had to convince the person from the department revenue that we were actually buying that property. That property was bought for $2 million by the Hillview Enterprise so that it came out of the schools. That's why you see a fence around it. That fences the enterprise property. Everything beyond that, where Mr. Carrucci's field is going to be, that's general government.
Talking about the turf field.
So the restrictions of the Hillview Enterprise are very specific. You can't use it. I can't say it enough. 38 years I've been saying it. To all kinds of people, general government can't use it.
I don't think anybody's asking to use the money here is what I'm hearing, but I, but I wanted to hear what, what, what you were asking about what, what our intention is on spending after we take on this first phase of the project that, at the golf course, right? And as I said at the outset, we don't have any hard numbers. We have a, a Phase Two, which will be to erect a structure for administrative offices that will be making the cart barn watertight. We need to do that. We've looked into that. That's also quite expensive. This will kill two birds with one stone and set up the enterprise to become more environmentally friendly, friendly, and to also put the golf course in a position long-term that we won't be taking some of our operating money and putting it into a building that's antiquated, that may be vacant, but it's certainly not giving us the return that we feel is responsible, that we want to make. So we're, as, as I also said early on, this is the hard decision. Maybe this is either Mr. Carrucci or Mr. Stack. These gentlemen have dedicated 40 years to running that commission. I came on late. I've been on less than 10 years. When we first, when this was first introduced and we were going to make the building watertight, these people were, were nervous about bonding that much money to, you know, secure this building. Over time, we came to a different, a different decision. We feel it's the only responsible decision. I think Mr. Massey is asking a fine question to say, what's the plan after this happens? But I'm hearing from each of you gentlemen, questions about what we're going to do with the money. And I think what Mr. Stack is saying is, this is the responsible action at Phase One. Phase Two, we have to go back to the town and we will again come before you because we'll need to probably bond what we're going to do. And we'll have to come to you with an idea if we're going to spend money to, through the, through the bonding process to improve the golf course. And if, if there are other purposes that the town or the community has for the enterprise funds, we will weigh those with open deliberation and give them due assessment.
And the staff just said it best, no matter what we decide here, it's town meeting.
Town, town, town meeting is.
And if town meeting wants us to patch it for 2.6 million and then, you know, we got a shiny new roof on, you know, a building that I wouldn't let my kid in, that's, that's up to them.
That's their right. They own the property. The property's owned by every citizen and town and authority, period.
Mrs. Gonzalez, did you have anything to add?
I'm sorry, no, no, I don't.
Anyone else before we vote?
I also like to make one last point. I think it would be irresponsible for us as commissioners, especially with some of us leaving, aging, you know, we're not young, that there's going to be a lot of young people in town, I hope, who'll have an interest. And it'll be that generation that will determine what happens with that property. Okay? We're, we're not ready to, we couldn't afford it right now. We're going to do what we have to do to make that property as it is and hopefully turn it over to younger people for them to understand the Hillview, keep it running the way it's set up. Because it's very tragic for it, very tragic, even though it sounds so successful. It's very tragic. And the fact is, other people determine what's land in town, what they want, what they, as long as it stays within Rule 97 and keep the partner revenue happy. Those are the only two things in town, period. Okay?
Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks a lot.
Mr. Massey, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chan, I move to recommend our 21 Hillview function building demolition project.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Massey. The chair is aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you for coming for us.
Thank you.
Karen, thanks.
Thank you, Karen.
For Article twenty-two, how's the vote? Because don't we need to know what Article twenty-one does?
I would, I would recommend that the, um, recommend a town.
Town meeting, right? It's pretty straightforward. Mr. Massey, please.
Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting, Article twenty-two rescind authorization to file.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
The chair is aye. Article twenty-three, Mr. Filberto.
Article twenty-three, appropriate funding fiscal year twenty-two-six for other post-employment benefit liability trust fund. This is an account that we use. Uh, right now we're simply adding money to it, um, as a means to fund the future costs for, uh, post-employment benefits, including health insurance. Um, to the finance director, the dollar amount?
Four hundred and twenty-five thousand from raised inappropriate.
And this is something we proudly have recommended be funded through raised inappropriate. It's funded sort of right off the top of our, um, annual budget plan and it's something that we tout to our reading agencies and I would recommend that the board vote to recommend the article.
Can I have a motion, please, Mr. Massey?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article twenty-three fiscal year twenty-two-six, appropriator transfer funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
The chair is aye.
Article twenty-four would be funding for the required fiscal year twenty-two-seven revaluation of, um, town real estate. Just the dollar amount of funding source, Mr. Yeldon.
Hundred and fifty thousand from overlay reserve. The assesses released the old one.
So the overlay reserve is an amount that, um, accumulates year over year depending upon the amount of abatements that we receive. We are recommending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund this revaluation, which is required under state law. Uh, we need to fund it now because it's a, um, pretty lengthy process, both in terms of procurement and then in terms of the actual exercise to be done in time for fiscal year twenty-two-seven. Um, but we are due for this, uh, revaluation. The board assessors have submitted this article. Um, and my recommendation, the board would be to vote to recommend the article.
Motion, please, Mr. Massey.
I'm sorry. Can you, can you just again?
Sure. So it's a state required, um, revaluation of real estate here in town, real estate valuation here in town that needs to occur, um, for fiscal year twenty-two-seven. Uh, so we need to fund, um, the effort in advance of that date or assessors have requested to do so under this article. Um, they've also, um, released funding, you said, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the overlay reserve to fund this. So the overlay reserve is a, um, a, a fund that accumulates, uh, year over year. When we budget, we set aside funding for, um, any sort of tax relief that might come in. And so, uh, there is available funding to fund this. We don't need another taxpayer to ask, ask for it. Um, and we would recommend that the board vote to recommend it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to recommend Article twenty-four, fund fiscal year twenty-two-seven revaluation.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Article twenty-five would fund the, uh, annual retirement obligations for the town. So this is not our assessment to Middlesex County retirement system, but instead it is an article that we fund for the one-time costs associated with the retirement of both school and municipal employees. Um, Mrs. Yeldon, the, uh, the dollar amounts, please.
Uh, two hundred thousand and, uh, it's from free cash.
And so this is an article that's generally available to us to use from one fiscal year to the next, where we can generally fund it each year. Um, and we are recommending that the board vote to recommend the article.
How do we get, how do we get ourselves out from under this? Um, like if we're to keep chipping away our free cash every single year, is there any way to get ahead of it?
Are you asking about the, um, retirement obligation cost?
Yeah.
So we've been trying and we've worked with our collective bar, you bring, uh, uh, unions to do so, to, to use your words, sort of chip away at the benefit. It often involves a strategy where we may reduce the end-of-career benefit for, uh, newer employees. And so there's many units where we've been able to do that and to reduce the obligation. Um, in the past, there's been sort of one-time payouts that have happened to reduce that obligation too, that I can think of, going back a number of years. Um, it, it's subject to negotiations under state law. So, uh, we're, we're working with existing contract language that the town has agreed to over the years. And we've tried to work with our employees to reduce that, but, um, you know, it is something that's a subject of negotiation.
Um, Mr. Chairman, did I make a motion?
No.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend, uh, Article twenty-five, fund retirement obligations.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
The chair is aye.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Article twenty-six, fund town building repairs, uh, through you to the finance directors for the dollar amount funding source.
Fifty thousand from the cash.
So this is customerly, uh, incorporation in this amount from this funding source. Um, it says town building repairs. It generally ends up being town building repair projects of some sort. So, uh, we really look to guide the Department of Public Works to utilize this funding for, um, work that might be needed to ensure we preserve the condition of our buildings, maybe make, uh, small improvements. Some of the things that we've done is flooring, um, in the municipal buildings. Um, we've done some HVAC projects, smaller HVAC projects that wouldn't otherwise qualify for, um, funding under, um, a capital improvement plan. Um, in this case, I, I think this article is going to become more and more important as we're forced to tighten up the operating budget. Uh, we have been making a concerted effort to increase the amount of money we put in DBW for, um, project work. We're now trying to direct that project work through these articles, which can go from one year to the next. Um, I can't, you know, outline specific projects at this point in time. Um, it's intended to deal with things as they come up during the course of the fiscal year. But one thing we do have our eye set upon is HVAC, um, and, um, some small projects that we might need to fund, um, in, in addition to what's being recommended in the capital. And my recommendation, the board would be to vote to recommend the article.
Chairman, I move to recommend Article twenty-six fiscal year twenty-two-six, fund town building repairs.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary. O'Leary, not a lawyer. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Mr. Wall.
Yeah.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Is he good?
Yes, he said, yeah.
I am, I, but, uh, well, I'm sorry, we don't, where are these listed?
So the projects are generally identified during the course of the fiscal year. So as they come up, as a department, I, I hear from a department. So as DBW might hear from a department about a problem in a municipal building that needs to be addressed. Um, there, flooring is something that we do have our eye on, particularly in this building. So, um, there may be a supplement for that as well.
Still.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair is aye. Prior year bills, sorry.
The vote was five, five to zero percent.
Yeah.
Prior year bills, so we don't, do we have any identified at this point in time? So we're going to recommend that the board vote to recommend it town meeting. Our hope is that we'll be able to pass it over, but usually something pops up between now and town meeting. So I don't necessarily recommend, um, against.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article twenty-seven, prior year bills.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
The chair is aye.
Article twenty-eight, which is to, um, authorize the treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements. So this is an article, um, that is annually approved at town meeting in order to, um, ensure that the way we pay, um, a bank for custody of an account is in accordance with state law. I'll refer to it as housekeeping, although I don't always love that term. Um, I'm just looking to bring up a better description. I don't know if you can describe it better than I can, but we have, we have a really good description we use in the warrant that I just don't have right in front of me. I'm going to fill it up to, and watch it. If that's okay. So it allows the treasurer to enter into a compensating balance agreement with the bank, um, through which a portion of the interest earnings for deposits are retained by the bank in exchange for their services. So it's a way for us to avoid having appropriate funding to pay for a bank, uh, for custody of our funds. So a portion of the interest that we are in actually owes to pay the fees, but it requires authorization under state law. And this, uh, my recommendation would be to vote to recommend the article.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article twenty-eight, authorize treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Massey. The chair is aye.
Article twenty-nine, uh, just to accept a general law provision relative to tax title foreclosure procedures. Um, there's a statute that the town has not adopted that would allow for, um, abandoned, from the manner in which it, uh, funds may be disposed of, abandoned funds may be disposed of when they're held in the custody of the town. Rather than the funding going directly to the state treasurer is obviously, we all hear the ads, um, with regard to abandoned property. Um, this would subject it to a, a local, uh, dispersal process. Mr. Chairman, I'm just sorry, Article twenty-eight was also unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you.
Article twenty-nine, did we not have a foreclosure procedure before today?
Uh, so we, we didn't have, we hadn't, we didn't adopt this statute, which allowed us to maintain local control over the abandoned funds. I think that's sort of the piece that was missing. To be candid, I think we've been following this process all along, but this would memorialize our adoption of the, um, of the process.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article twenty-nine, accept master general law, chapter two hundred page, section nine, any tax title foreclosure procedures.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair is aye.
I take Articles thirty and thirty-one together. They are routine articles which allow for, um, ensuring the authorization that for any town officer from which there isn't a statutory or charter provision that designates how they are appointed, that the select would be authorized to be that appointing authority. That would be Article thirty. Article thirty-one is, uh, to hear, uh, the reports, uh, specifically the printed report, which we are in the process of putting together, um, and to accept that requirement. For both Article thirty and thirty-one, my recommendation would be to vote to recommend it.
Mr. Massey, can we just go back to back those, please?
Select town officers is that? Do we have any anticipated town officers we're selecting?
So I, I, I can't think of an instance in my ten years where there has not been, um, any sort of a clear distinction of who makes the appointment. So nearly, uh, case of, uh, in, in the case of nearly all the town's employees, it's the town administrator who's the appointing authority. The appointing authority under the charter for town council for the auditor and for the treasurer is the select board. So you've seen that, uh, appointment and we've had that discussion. Um, this has been, I think, customerly and historically a catch-all for anything that's left, left unidentified. Um, I can't think of anything that we have not already determined the appointing authority, which for nearly everybody else is a select board anyway. So boards and committees, things like that.
Was this article on there in June twenty-twenty-fourth, Tom, yeah?
It's been every year since, at least since I've lived in town, um, that can be good. I've never pursued with town council whether it's actually needed or not. Um, that's something that I guess, you know, they don't, they've never objected to being, to it being on there.
Would this be recommended town meeting?
Uh, no, my recommendation would be to recommend now. It, it simply clarifies that if there isn't an appointing authority, that that authority be the select board for any position.
It just means that, let's say, there's a new committee or something where it doesn't explicitly say in the charter that it's a, it's select board, it will be select board?
I go back to my warrant from National, which has a much better description. That will, that will help.
Well, while he gets that back, do you want to read the Article thirty-one? I'll just go forward. That was more.
Well, I have questions on that one, too.
Okay.
So for this one, um, you know, again, provides for the selection of officers not otherwise specified within the annual town election ballot, the general bylaws or the charter. So establishing that for any position that does not have that appointing authority identified, they come to the select board. Again, I can't think of any where that's been questioned, to the point I think Mr. Suda was bringing up, if you created a committee, um, you presumably would be designating yourselves to be the appointing authority, although I guess you could delegate that at, at the vote. But this is more intended for something that might be in state law that is not specifically identified as it comes to both revenue.
I'm sorry. Then, Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, recommend Article thirty, select town officers.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
The chair is aye. Article thirty-one.
Article thirty-one, is this, um, how, how can we, if I wanted to make a board member report? Um, I actually tried to do one, I think, in October, but Mr. Moderator said something like, oh, I haven't, I wasn't told of any board member report. So I didn't know that was the process of having to submit it to him and not just raising hands, say, I've got something to say. So I guess my question is, what is the process to make comments?
To be candid, my experience with the auditor, with the moderator has been, well, there's two components. There's a written report that's, um, filed with the, the town, or for the town every year, um, compiled by my administrative assistant with reports from nearly every board, committee, commission, department. So that's one component of it. And then the secondly, there's a, or a report that might be provided to, um, town, um, town meeting. I know that the moderator in the past, you know, prefers to know that, uh, a report's going to be offered. Um, I'm not quite sure I understand why he may have not allowed such a report to be offered. I think if it would be made, we'd need to be clear whether it was being offered on behalf of the select board as a whole or individually, things like that would be important. Um, but, um, the, the surest way to address or prevent any sort of issue is to maybe just let us know if you have something that you want to report on, we could let the moderator know. Mr. O'Leary.
Yeah, generally what this is, is if there's an ongoing, like the facilities master plan committee and the fire station building committee, uh, the sustainability committee wants to give an updated report on an ongoing project, this would be the appropriate place to do it. So it's for boards, committees and commissions, not necessarily individual board members. I mean, if the select board wanted to give an update on something, we'd give it here. Plus, it's the annual report which is published and distributed. So it's not for individual board members or commission members to give a, an opinion on something. It's, it's for an ongoing project to give an update to town meeting.
Is that what the law says?
What's that?
Is that what the law says for ongoing?
That's how, that's how it's worked for, for all the years.
On, on, ongoing projects, huh?
No, no, no. It's ongoing projects or ongoing initiatives, whatever it's going to be. But it's, it's the board committee and commission wants to give a report to town meeting, not individual members. The, the committee as a whole would give a report to town meeting. Just tell you how it's operated.
I know, I know it's thirty-first article, it's going to be a very long night, so I'm not going to be giving a report, I'll tell you that. So.
Uh, can I have a, because that would prolong it.
Correct. Well, we'll talk about, there's thirty articles, I'm sure you could fit something in. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article thirty-one, hearing act on reports of town officers and committees.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair's eye. Now we will sign this. We have to vote, we have to vote to sign, correct?
Yeah, so it should be a vote to sign the warrant, but I do just a couple things that I picked up within the discussion here. Do we want to see modified, the addition of the term citizen's petition to the first three or four articles? I did hear that brought up. Do we? And then there was a suggestion, I thought I heard mentioned, about adding the name to the titles for the articles for the two naming, the field naming articles.
There wasn't, but we can do that.
No, I'm just, because if there is, I'll do that and I will reprint it.
It's in the warrant, right, the one that's gonna go out?
Has an explanation, is the, the explanation? Is the who you suggest, who the school committee is recommending?
Yeah, so it's in, it's in the, it's now, the names are now in the article, but I thought I heard a comment about whether it should be the title of the article. So that's what I'm asking, maybe I misunderstood that.
I think you did.
Okay. Now, the citizens petitions, do we want each one of them to be labeled citizen's petition, colon? I mean, that would be consistent with what has happened in the past. I just.
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm okay with that.
True. All right, so those changes I will make momentarily, we'll get you to sign this.
Okay.
Hopefully, Mr. Ladd is still here.
He's here.
I think, yeah, but he moved back to kind of his, the left where he usually is, not exactly.
I'm gonna step to the side office. Will you all vote, if that's okay?
What are we going on?
Is that on the warrant?
Oh, yeah, okay. Mr. Massey, the votes assigned.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the June nine, twenty twenty-five spring annual town meeting warrant.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Further discussion? Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Chair's eye. While he fixes that, if anybody is to use, as we call it in my house, the potty. We may stay in recess for a few minutes.
Can I do my public comment while you're ongoing?
Huh?
Can I do the public comment while you're ongoing, make your talk, while we're in here?
I mean, I mean, I'll, I'll even go home, bye, come back, bye.
On Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty five, will be held on Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty five, at eight P. M. Room fourteen, Town Hall, two thirty-five North Street, and via Zoom technology with a plus or minus start time of two hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. It's a brief budget hearing presentation for fiscal year twenty twenty six. A little bit about the time budget process, the collaboration between municipal and school leaders through the financial planning team, which you all have already referred to multiple times, to see the listing of those who are participants in the financial planning team's process, some of whom are seated in the room here, some behind me. We try to come up with a strategy for allocating revenue, try to address budget shortfalls, ultimately recommend a budget to you, to the school committee and the finance committee to be forwarded to town meeting for approval each June. Again, subject to review, debate, discussion, and then ultimately approval at town meeting. As I've mentioned in previous years, this process evolves over multiple months. Fortunately, it evolved in some ways more favorably in that we were able to reduce deficits, but there are remaining deficits for both the municipal and school budgets requiring cuts nonetheless. These components, you know, they change over time, some of the numbers have evolved as we continue the process and more information may become available. Sometimes there's variance in the figures during the discussion from where they were a few weeks ago, but we've been pretty stable in the spot we've been in since April fourteenth, when we last reviewed this with you. Ultimately, as I said, the attendees at town meeting may have the final say. All the work that we do is to prepare a document that we believe is balanced within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half. Town meeting can change that, but in the end, a budget must be in place by July first of each year for the towns departments, including the school department, to operate. Talking about the budget challenges, this has been indeed a very challenging year. Sixty-four point eight million dollars of our revenue comes in from property taxes, the rest is state aid, departmental revenue, excise tax, et cetera. Property taxes for existing buildings and developed land represent our only source of revenue that's predictable over the long term. New growth, which we've talked a lot about, increases property taxes each year, but it's not necessarily predictable over the long term. For a twenty-year period, which we reviewed here, the average cost increases exceeded our revenues. The two and a half percent numbers we've talked about for property taxes under state law, our fixed costs have increased about five percent on average, our municipal department costs three point three percent on average annually, and school department salaries and expenses, four point one percent on average annually. Our budget challenges, this is some of what we talked about during the budget process last fiscal year, updated slightly to reflect where we're at now, and that is, of course, of new growth that's stabilized the force in our budgets, which allowed our budget to be balanced with only the two point five percent increase over that period of time, despite the other, despite our expenses increasing at rates higher than that. Started with larger subdivisions than the edge of departments, and most recently Martin's Landing, that the construction over there got coming to a conclusion. Conservative budgeting in recent years allowed the town to use free cash from one year to the next to cover certain costs. The current fiscal year, twenty twenty five, is likely the last year that we will see a substantial amount of free cash come out at the end due to some necessary budget adjustments that we've talked about here. Our ability to present a balanced budget using funds up north from those previous years will come to an end as well, as we're forced to decrease the amount of money available in department budgets. I know this is all familiar to the board members, but for the communities, for those in the community who have not been following, this is where many of the cuts have been made in municipal budgets over the past few years, but particularly this year. This is a trend that we put together, I should say, we had, the finance director to my left, Lori Galvin, put together, going back to two and a half years at least at this point. It shows basically what happened. We take that twenty-year project, that twenty-year history and project it forward twenty years. And you see that the deficit grows. If we go all the way out to twenty forty-three, it would be just under fifty million dollar deficit on our operating budget, which would be at that point trying a little over a hundred and twenty million dollars, almost a hundred and thirty million dollars. Just trying to show that there are pressures on the budget that have been in place over the long term, looking backwards, and are projected to be in place looking forward as well. We've talked about this for multiple years now. This is a slide from the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three town meeting. I'll just point everyone to the comments in red, which is that fiscal year twenty twenty five would be even more difficult, and that we would face difficult discussions about our priorities, including what we could and could not afford within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half and our other revenue streams. Last year, a slide from the June tenth, twenty twenty-four town meeting, just that part highlighted in red, that the collective leadership identified the financial strain on annual budgets as urgent, and were proposing a proposition to an override, a tax increase to stabilize municipal and school services. That the decision to support the override was certainly an individual voter's decision, but that in the absence of additional tax revenue through an override, there will be direct adverse school and municipal service impacts over the next eighteen months and beyond. That was from June of twenty twenty-four. That has held true as we've gone through this municipal and school budget process in the form of cuts that have been made to both the school and municipal budget requests for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Our goals were to continue collaborating through the town and school leaders and the financial planning team while maintaining services to the extent possible, where necessary modify or add services to respond to the community needs, in case of municipal government that was adding four firefighter positions in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, in order to continue to be able to provide the level of response needed in the community for emergencies. We did incorporate multiple funding streams, as we talked about during the course of reviewing the warrant over the past couple of hours, and then developing a scenario that maintained the services without relying on an override. This is a projection that shows revenue versus departmental requests, and if we just go to, we started the top, eighty-four million, four hundred twenty-five, twenty thousand, one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, our total revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, based on our spending plan. When we kind of move through our fixed costs, we end up in a situation, so of course, I'll just highlight there, ten, ten million, four hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars in fixed costs, that's primarily health insurance and our retirement assessment, debt services as well. It's in that number, so that's kind of coming off the top. Those are bills that are due that we need to pay, for which we have very little discretion. That leaves about seventy-three million, nine hundred and forty, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars left for the cost of operating municipal schools and municipal departments, including any related costs. So when we go through the process, which we've talked about here, for municipal services, our level services request, including those four firefighting positions, one million, four hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred and nine dollars, after an allocation adjustment, we ended up with a deficit of five hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars, which needed to be cut from departmental requests. For the school department, their request was forty-one million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. After an allocation adjustment, the net school deficit was seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, needing to be cut in fiscal year, from fiscal year twenty twenty-six request. So this just shows a pie chart showing the allocation of funding. The total of our fixed costs, when we include the related costs for municipal and school budgets, twenty-five million, six hundred thousand dollars, about twenty-one million dollars for municipal government operation, about forty-one million dollars, a little bit less. So you see sort of what the breakdown is pictorially here. Just talking about the municipal budget, and this should look familiar, we had to go through and make reductions to balance the budget, and we're not going to be able to zoom in, but I'll just call out some of the highlights. Things that we had to cut, there was some budget adjustments from the February submission that we started with off the top. Needed to eliminate Economic Development Committee funding, reducing salaries in finance by committing to hold the Assistant Finance Director position vacant. Funding seventy-five percent of the request for salaries for the four new firefighters was able to save ninety-five thousand dollars, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars. Those are things that, that's an expense that's going to be very real for us to have to make up in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, when we expect we'll have a full year, or we hope we'll have a full year of those firefighters on payroll. We had to make reductions in public safety overtime for police and fire as well. We hope that they'll be able to remain balanced through the end of the fiscal year based upon their trends, but it all depends upon the nature of the challenges that both departments face during the course of the year. Reduced the number of funded town meetings from three to two each year. The past couple of years, we've had three town meetings, sort of taking a gamble that we're only going to need to have two during the course of fiscal year twenty twenty-six, so that's a ten thousand dollar cut, but it may very well be, need to be something that we need to find funding for if a third meeting is required. Unfortunately, we had a request for additional funding for administrative assistance for veterans, but we're not able to add those hours based upon the financial limitations. These are all cuts that need to be made to municipal governments, that the budgets that have an impact in terms of the timing for some of the things that we need to do, whether or not we need to make a transfer at the end of fiscal year. And then down below are the items that would potentially need to, there are reductions that would address the creation of free cash, which has been so important for us to get from one fiscal year to the next. Going through, you know, there's a variety of different areas where we're making adjustments. They're cuts, make no mistake about it. We've been fortunate that the funding has not necessarily been needed in each fiscal year, but we're one, you know, changing the trend away, where we're going to need to rely on that funding, and it won't be available to us in future fiscal years. We are looking to try to balance the budget and to take pressure off of the operating budget. That gives you an idea of the reductions for the municipal departmental budgets. Again, they may not have a direct impact on the residents in some of the cases, but that will generate, that will reduce how much free cash we have available to the tune of over three hundred thousand dollars. In fiscal year twenty-six, there'd likely be further reductions that would impact the reserve, let's just say fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, reduction in workforce beyond positions that are currently vacant, further reduction in expense accounts exposure, and this even further to potentially underfunded departmental budgets. Just a little bit from public schools, this is taken from the presentation that was made at the school committee's budget vote on, I believe, April twenty-eighth. They needed to, so we were able to identify a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in so-called one-time expenses that could be funded using free cash, so that reduced their deficit from forty million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, forty-nine dollars, to forty million, seven hundred eighty thousand, forty-nine dollars. That left a gap of five hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars.
So they still did use free cash, so in the
Yeah, there was an agreement in the financial planning team to use a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars towards the deficit. You know, we're really, you know, for both municipal and school purposes, we're sort of really pushing to use the free cash. And I don't want it, not just for the school items, it's for some of the municipal use as well, but we're at the limit at this point in terms of the utilization, both in terms of what we could use it for and how much is available to utilize it. So that did reduce the deficit to five hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars. This is a listing from their presentation that shows how that five hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars would be reduced in the form of mostly positions being eliminated, total of seven point two full-time equivalent positions, to reduce the deficit down from five hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars to zero dollars. There is a couple of fees that they're looking to put in there, increasing the secondary late bus user fee by a hundred dollars, preschool tuition increase for full and half-day programs of twelve thousand dollars, and then user fees for middle school, high school, elementary, and finance fifteen thousand. So those are three increases that would be put in effect to help bridge that gap in total of five hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Mr. Gobero, just looking through that, I was poking around before the meeting, this, this slide, so this is their final cuts or this is proposed if accepted by town meeting?
This is, my understanding is that these are the reductions that they are planning to make, assuming that budget submitted to town meeting is approved.
So they chose to cut all teachers and parents, but no administrative?
The top is, the top position is administrative position. One point oh full-time equivalent position, it's not been identified yet, but that's what they're proposing to do.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Just a little bit about other funding sources, because we know it comes up. We do have a variety of different reserve or stabilization fund accounts that are out Nearly all of them are restricted in terms of their use for either one-time or specific purposes, it makes it challenging for us to address our financial shortfalls, it certainly makes it impossible for us to do so on an ongoing basis, because when you deplete these funds, they're no longer available. We always look to this to see, okay, is there something we can do to try to balance the budget rather than make a cut or to have to ask for a tax increase? But I think that the financial planning team feels that we've reached our max in terms of being able to do that. Again, the biggest issue being the limitation of the use of those funds, but in the interest of transparency, wanting folks to know that, you know, they are there, generally, you know, more potentially usable for capital than other expenses, subject to a vote at town meeting. You know, just to sort of summarize, you know, the past few years have been very challenging for the financial planning team and for all the folks, including you, to try to balance the budget, and we are at a spot where the only way to balance the budget obviously is to identify cuts, and that's something that we've, you know, done to the extent that we can to try to balance the budget. I remain very concerned for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven and what that will look like, given what we had to do this year to balance the budget. And, you know, when you start looking at that sort of prioritized listing that we've been talking about, I think you saw in our last review of that, that we're very much at, you know, some much more direct impacts on our residents. There will be indirect impacts that folks will see when something's not done in a timely fashion, or they can't get ahold of somebody immediately. That's sort of an indirect impact of the staffing levels that we're at and trying to get things done. We asked for the public's patience if we try to get through that, but, you know, the impacts that they will only grow, and certainly far more extensive in the public schools based on the positions that they need to cut. So I'll stop there.
I'm going to go to the public first, into the public portion of the hearing.
Just go to the microphone.
Yeah, go to the microphone, please, and then I'll go online as well. Anyone has a question, please?
A couple of quick things, and I want to thank you, reach out to me, Gonzalez, for the wonderful job she has done for the past six years. As a committee member on a couple of committees, she's been extremely fair, I feel, to all the departments, all committees, extreme professional, and when she didn't know something, she would reach out to us before on different committees to ask what's going on, so she'd be prepared when she came to town meeting. So I just wanted to thank her for everything that she has been as far as a selectman, transparent, her integrity, very important position, obviously, as you know, being a select person, all of you, and she's stepped up and appreciate, and our committees appreciate everything she's done first. So the only guarantee is she's not going to be on the ballot, so I can thank her, because I know she's really leaving. I'm going to hold any accolades off for you afterwards, I want to thank you, but I will thank you certainly for your six years and your work beforehand, and after the election, you're sitting here, you're not, go back into more things, but it's tough, it's tough deciding, especially the past five, ten years, it keeps coming back, so thank you. The second one I'm bringing up, the second position I'm bringing up is, I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the selectmen, if you already know this or not, there was a couple, hundred people, hundred people plus, that happened to make comments regarding an incident that happened with the
Just one thing.
Yep.
That would be the next, the public comment you're doing. This is specific to the hearing.
Oh my God, did I fall asleep?
No. You're ahead, you're ahead by one item.
Oh my God, thank you.
Do you get to say all that nice stuff?
Where were you? I'm going to say it again. I'm going to say it again, Leah, I can look it right up at you. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Those ones.
No problem. Any, any questions on the, anyone online? I'm going to, do you see anybody online? Oh, you're like a seer of less, you would scroll in there for a while, that's amazing.
So there's a comment that there will be a public comment. There may have been an issue with the presentation being frozen at one point in time, and then there's a comment from somebody identified as E. V. Richards, nineteen sixty-eight. I'm formally requesting that the public hearing scheduled for eight P. M., be stopped immediately and rescheduled, it's now over two hours late, and this delay has likely excluded many members of the public, particularly elderly residents who could not remain that long. Receiving at this hour undermines the public's rights to meaningful participation and may constitute a violation of the deal. Meanwhile, I ask that this hearing not continue tonight and be re-noticed at a time consistent with the posting agenda.
Any other comment?
I can vote that the slides were frozen, I clearly see the first slide.
Is this available online?
It will be, it will be, it will certainly post it online.
So that's the only, that's the problem with virtual sometimes, I mean, we do the best we can, but it's just. I'm going to, I'm going to close the public hearing, if no one else has a comment, and then go to the select board. Once, twice. So, okay, Ms. Gonzalez, you can go first. Any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Larry?
No, just a comment that this is a significant amount of time, and just the chairman himself, myself, and the financial planning team, members of the finance committee, school committee, school administration, town administration, coming together, put together this package for town meeting to, again, hold their nose and vote for it, because it's, it's not what we need, it's not what we want, but it's all that we can afford. So it's a, it's a good collaborative effort, coming forward to come together and present a budget that does the least amount of damage, I guess, how else can we put it? Damage nonetheless, if we're talking about positions being eliminated, we're talking about programming, we're not moving forward, and it's unfortunate, but it's a situation we find ourselves in, and collaboratively, we put together a budget that we're all in agreement on, and the school committee is all in agreement on, and we hope the town meeting will support it. But it wasn't done in a vacuum, this was hundreds of hours, put together by a whole host of people, to work it all out, and so, yeah, I want to applaud everybody's effort that was involved, and colleagues' efforts, and coming to understand exactly how we arrived at what was being proposed, and we hope the town meeting sees fit to support it.
Mr. Massey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, we had a strategic planning meeting amongst us, board and Ms. Gonzalez. We talked about setting money aside for infrastructure, knowing that this town certainly is going to have a lot of infrastructure needs, we heard it tonight, which is another new one. Seemed like this board took a consensus to the fact of allocating one to two percent into infrastructure right at the top. I don't see that proposed here, I'm just wondering what my board thinks. Pretty sure it was unanimous consensus.
I mean, I think we, we decided we'd look into it, and then it just, it wasn't in the cards. I mean, it would have been, it would have been a much bigger reduction in bodies for school and municipal at that point, if we took two percent right for infrastructure. I mean, I mean, we're pretty deep in the rabbit hole here of the budget though, I mean, we're talking about this for, I, I, no, and I was there, Mr. Massey, I agree with you, we, we did that. I think from my standpoint, the reason it's not come up is because of, we just couldn't afford to do it. I'm just thinking about two percent off the top and a third of that coming off municipal.
I agree, I, I think about it too, but we all talked about it, we agreed, and then it never gets brought up again. I see that pattern happen with a lot of things, so I'm trying to figure out, you know, when we come to a consensus, and we all agree on something, if it's going to actually get done or get talked about even. I mean, I'm not, you know, we didn't take any votes that night, but it was certainly a consensus, and bring it up on an agenda item, that's, that's your call.
No, that was during the, when we were talking about the, hold on, Mr. Gobero, do you want to?
I want to talk to that.
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, I'd just say we reviewed the revenue expense plan multiple times here at this forum, didn't get guidance to change course, and then we went through a series of reductions that were based on that plan as well. I will say that it was not as, we're not ignoring the issue of trying to invest in infrastructure, I think that was a big part of why I felt that the capital approval planning committee should be relying more heavily on free cash for capital investment, that really was a much larger number than we were expecting it to. So I think the board did end up receiving something that was more focused on capital than it would have otherwise been, because you would have seen a much smaller capital improvement process, and we didn't rely on the use of that free cash. But in terms of taking money off the top from the fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating budget, I mean, I feel like we were here multiple times with a revenue plan very clear about what was happening, it didn't get directed to go in any different way.
Mr. Larry?
No, again, I didn't disagree with it as a goal, you know, to try and achieve, you know, one to two percent, recognizing that it was going to be a difficult goal to achieve, but it's certainly one that should be recognized and put forth, and I think what Mr. Gobero's point, the capital approval planning committee, we had discussions about the need to increase the amount of money dedicated towards infrastructure to help close the gap and address some of the issues we need to be addressing, I think that's what we saw there. But again, when I voted in favor of a consensus basis to support one or two percent of the top, it was a goal, you know, knowing that it was going to be difficult to achieve, a notable goal that we should have out in front of us all the time, and we should try and achieve it moving forward if we can, but it's, until we can find some more revenue, I'm not, I don't see how we can achieve that goal without impacting some of the other priorities that we have in relation to public safety and education, so, again, I support the goal, that night, and today, but that's what it is, it's a goal, and in order to try and achieve part of that goal, we increase the amount of infrastructure in the capital approval planning process.
More overrides.
I'm sorry?
You said more overrides.
I, I didn't hear.
More overrides.
For what?
You supported overrides, something the capital approval means?
I didn't say it, I forgot what it means. No, I said infrastructure, we, we invested more in infrastructure this year in the budget that we're putting forth for consideration than we normally have, in order to help address those needs, and read the goals of having more money devoted towards infrastructure, particularly in the neighborhoods.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend the fiscal year twenty
Oh, hold on, I see, I'm sorry, no, I thought, Mr. Waller?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend the fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating budget, and the following amounts is presented by the town administrator. Municipal, twenty million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. School, forty million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, forty-nine dollars. Fixed, twenty-five million, six hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Enterprises, seven million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Totalling a town budget of ninety-five million, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Waller, refer to discussion.
So the numbers are adjusted slightly, because they don't make a total on property, you want us to describe that?
I didn't realize, I wasn't thinking, it wasn't a spreadsheet, so I changed the municipal school effects and enterprises, I didn't change the total from last year. So the total is, each line was right, it was the ninety-five million, eight sixty-nine that I didn't change, so the total was wrong on the one that was in the brackets.
But this is right, this one.
The motion is correct, okay, this is
The motion is
To be clear, the total To, to be clear, the total was ninety-five million, sixty-nine, eight hundred, is that what you showed?
Ninety-five million, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars period.
Okay, yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Excellent.
Uh, just wanna mention to the board, uh, for those of you that may be here after tomorrow, I plan to, uh, bring this subject up again about, uh, the infrastructure in this town, the budget issues that we're having, and sometimes the strong moves that we need to make in order to get what's done, what needs to be taken done. So, um, I will accept the budget here.
I will be there here. On, that I can tell you, okay? And so, Mr. O'Leary? Sorry, Captain.
Hopefully, Mr. Waller.
Mrs. Gonzalez will not. Well, she won't even be in the state. Maybe one day your plan won't get canceled, but, um, so I'll tell you, Mrs. Gonzalez, yea or nay? On the vote?
What's that?
On the vote for the budget. I'm doing the vote.
Yay.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Chair is aye. Okay. Other comment, Ms. Waller? And by the way, do not feel like you have to repeat everything about Mrs. Gonzalez, even though she'd love for you to hear it again.
No, I want to hear them all again.
I didn't see you, so I don't think you heard it.
I'll paraphrase. She said, "You were awesome. Thank you. Enjoy life."
You're a class act and you represented the void very, very well for six years. You're gonna be a difficult person to replace because you were open, transparent, honest. You did all your homework, came prepared, and when you weren't sure, it's something you are. So, uh, any committee member or citizen can't thank you anymore than that for what you've done for the town for six years. Thank you for taking your time, your fair enough time with you away from them, and I appreciate everything you did for us and me in particular.
Thank you so much for you.
Thank you. Mr. Waller, good luck and I'll talk to you after the meeting when you're here. I'm not. Thank you. This past week, uh, there was, I don't normally respond and I didn't to articles on Facebook, et cetera, on the community page and things because too much stuff goes on it, uh, good, bad, indifferent. People get, uh, confused and if they're not confused, it doesn't matter if they're angry, they just wanna, uh, you know, debate what's going on in town and sometimes call people names and that because out of respect for what all five of you selectmen do and you selectmen have been born, uh, when they need, they need to, uh, out of the sides, um, going after Parks and Recreation and, uh, some things that they maybe misunderstood. They also mentioned, uh, an anonymous member who brought this up in one of the community connection pages, uh, wanted to know the insight regarding the history of town permits from Parks and Rec and felt some local moms were, you know, at IRP and felt that there was some misunderstanding about user fees. Or not misunderstanding, they just felt Parks and Rec wasn't fair to them. They happened to throw some jabs at some town employees that I don't have a thick ass fear, you know, I paid enough, paid to be a town employee, hopefully you paid enough, you know, how to pay, uh, paid enough to, uh, put up with the jabs. But when they mentioned the selectmen, I said, "To be fair to you, I do not wanna be sitting home watching a selectmen's meeting like I do if I'm not here and have somebody bring it up because if they did, and they did call the selectmen, you wouldn't have anything to, um, understand the other side of the story." So this past week, they happened to be, uh, probably the twenty-five, thirty, um, moms and the kids in the strollers walking the park, et cetera. It came across, uh, Parks and Recreation, uh, on a Facebook page that came and showed a beautiful sight, a beautiful day, parents with their kids in the strollers, wonderful, great picture and it was nice. And it mentioned how at some point that they were, you know, this group was told that they need to have a permit to be down at the park, uh, in the future and this took on a life of its own with a hundred and some odd things back and forth. So I figured it should just be fair to you, but when we saw that, our department, which we normally would do, um, because some of the, uh, comments that came through were some of business that, um, had, had mentioned that they had, you know, uh, told people it's okay to show up at the park, you should show up at the park at this particular time and spend a couple hours, whatever. So we just reached out to this person that runs the business, that's, uh, has a nice business and mentioned, remember, if you put it on, on a site, see you all at the park at this time or be there at ten o'clock at the park, da, 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 da. And if a hundred and fifty people showed up, it's just that we've mentioned that obviously there's a, um, could be a user fee, we should get, you should have a permit, et cetera. And it got, like, if I'm gonna walk my child in the park, you're telling me we need a permit, and it took on its life of its own. So hopefully they, when they told you to call the selectmen, hopefully you were all called and talked about it. But I just want you to understand within five minutes of the time that we reached out to the business and said, did, was there some misunderstanding when we spoke about these things before? They basically just said, you know, we commonly may say, hey, there were gonna be groups, et cetera, et cetera, down at the park, this time if you wanna use it. So it's not blaming anyone for doing it, but it's a misunderstanding. Just wanted to make sure that everybody does understand permits are needed for anyone who wishes to reserve an area in the North Reading Parks or school facilities for their own exclusive use or for the use of people that they wanna suggest can use it. But once you say that you'd be there at a time, at an event, this is going on and you haven't got a permit, I don't know of any facility that you usually can show up with X amount of people without contacting the people that were going to be there. So, uh, all family groups, you're going down to play baseball and you talk to four neighborhoods and say, show down, show up at the field at this time, you need a permit. If you wanna walk the field, okay, but it's kind of as soon as you advertise that that's going to happen, uh, just so you understand a permit would be needed. We didn't throw the mothers off. We didn't say that they shouldn't come. They're lovely people that were down there and they all had a great time. But, um, what happens is when a hundred people get on site and believe this to be true, uh, within five minutes, like I said, we talked to the business and said, by the way, you remember, if you say something's gonna be down there at a certain time, you need a permit, it was over. The business person said, sorry about that. We were just saying that there's something that's gonna be down there because this group wants to be down there and they contacted a, another, uh, group from another state that would like to be down there to meet another group that's gonna be there. It's like having a, a speaker at the church and forgetting to tell people that a hundred people are coming or at a bake sale. So, um, like I said, it was handled professionally by the people in our Parks and Rec department. To have people go online and call a couple people, you know, names on what they're doing was unfortunate. I apologize to the, uh, Parks and Rec department that that had to happen. Uh, and what we tried to straight, say is if something was going on at the park, if they were under construction or anything else, not fair to invite a hundred people or however many people might show up on this particular day and then have them have to turn around and go home. So it's just a reminder that the, and if there are any questions, I just don't understand again why people, um, enjoy typing letters back and forth, as opposed to picking up the phone, calling Parks and Recreation, calling the DPW if it's something the DPW did, calling the library if it's something they did and discussing it with them first. And within five minutes, hopefully, everybody is understanding what happened and there's maybe no need for, um, all of you staying the extra ten minutes to let me tell you that they may call you. And, uh, that's what happened. So it's the, the business in Parks and Rec that felt there was a misunderstanding and understood it within five minutes and said, nope, no, no problem. Thank you and we understand it was a nice gesture for all the people who are down there and they're all welcome to be there. So if you have any questions, I would ask every one of you or any newsflash people to please pick up the phone, contact Parks and Rec if there's anything going on in that and to please have people refrain from calling, uh, any employee at the time names. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Rick.
Anyone else? Mr. Calata?
Uh, Mike Scalata, two forty, Montes Landing, Unit one oh two. Just a few thank yous. First thank you is to Select Board Member Nick Massey for your hard work and steadfast commitment to the betterment, betterment, betterment of North Reading. As of tomorrow night, you will have completed one year of service out of your three-year term and will no longer be considered a new member. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I know it probably seems a lot longer, but he's only been on the Select Board for one year. So during my Select Board campaign, I've met several, uh, residents along, during my campaign and in some instances, the conversations I had with the residents revolved around you, Nick. The overall sentiment is that the residents are extremely impressed, uh, with your knowledge of the issues, your willingness to offer solutions, your leadership and how well-prepared you are at Select Board meetings. Thank you. Uh, thank you to Select Board Member Rich Waller for your years of service and volunteerism to North Reading. I personally appreciate all that you have done for North Reading. Thursday night at the combined, uh, North Reading Food Pantry and Senior Center fundraiser, I was very impressed with your dancing skills. I think that might have solidified your reelection. If we have fortune to win tomorrow night, I would be very happy to, uh, work with you and collaborate with you on the Select Board. I wish you the very best of luck on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to Select Board Member Leanne Gonzalez for your years of service and volunteerism to the Select Board and to North Reading. Thank you for all your efforts and hard work with the Housing Authority, veterans and our youth. North Reading is a better place because of your tremendous leadership and commitment to ensuring that everyone is treated fairly and with respect. I wish you well with your future endeavors. Senator Bruce Tare wanted me to let you know that they do have a citation for you, um, from the State House and they, they, that will be sent to your home that recognizes your years of service as, as a North Reading Select Board member. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. [inaudible].
Kevin Anki, Adam Street. So I'm pretty much the same thing, Rich. I just wanna thank you for your service and wish you luck tomorrow. And Leanne, I've known you for probably six, seven years now when I met you through my wife and I'm proud to call you a friend and just wanna say thank you for your service and everything. And the last thing is as for tonight's, um, I just wanna actually, I'm a lot like Nick, just ask a lot of questions and if someone from the town is coming to me to ask for money or for vote, then I wanna have as much information as possible. And I just wanna sort of thank you for asking the questions because that's how I learn and inform myself. And so I just wanna say thank you and hope you ask a lot more questions in the future.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Kevin.
Vincenzo's gonna start getting grayer hairs, but I'll, I'll keep asking questions. It's too late for the grace. They're already there.
So. None, but no one's fault on this board of buying the grace. That's, I'll be honest there. Anyone online? Okay. Board member in all new business, Mr. Massey?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. I have a few different things to touch upon today if you don't mind. Trying to make it quick. I know we're getting late. A few things. One, um, there is a young man in our community, a sixteen-year-old named Brady Cullen, uh, who was battling a brain tumor since last August. He is a strong man in the face of a great challenge and that has been inspiring. Uh, it is always terrible to hear these situations, but when you hear of, uh, of it for the individ- individu- excuse me. Ind- excuse me. Individual as young as Brady, it hits a bit harder. Uh, he is also a big baseball fan and part of the North Reading Little League community. We have been supporting him however we can. His GoFundMe is quote, "Support Brady's Brain Tumor Battle," unquote. And please feel free to support it however you can for this young man. Uh, last Thursday, I-
Can you repeat that again, that support?
It's, uh, "Support Brady's Brain Tumor Battle." It's got about forty-three grand, which is pretty good. Um, last Thursday, I attended an event called New Bingo, which is a fundraising music bingo event for the Senior Center and the Food Pantry here in town. Uh, Mr. Waller was there as well and yes, we all got down on the dance floor. It was a lot, it was a lot of fun.
I'm still vibing.
That's, that's right. And you know what's funny is I got home and I said, wow, I am tired and realized that I left before it closed and seniors were still on the dance floor. I was really impressed. They, they could, uh, do them, but, um, it was a lot of fun. And I'm, I'm really glad I went. I'm glad I got to enjoy the time with a few others in town as well.
That's great.
Um, specific shout out to the organizers of that event. Peter Kohler, who, uh, volunteers himself, uh, as the DJ for these events, uh, which none of this can be possible without him and his efforts to the seniors in the town. Lena Simone, who was right there along with Peter, giving lots of her time to the seniors, Kim Manzelli and her team at the Senior Center, and of course, the North Reading Food Pantry team. There have been a couple candidates nights, uh, one held by the Democratic Town Committee at Town Hall and one by the Republican Town Committee at Kitty's. Uh, these are great events that were both well-attended and provide the residents the opportunity to listen to and ask questions to the candidates running for local elections. I think it is unique for our town having events like these and they have become a great tradition for this town that we should hold on to. Most importantly, the decorum of the audience and the candidates at both nights were respectful and that is the type of North Reading we love to see. It has been one year since my, uh, since I've been elected and I've had some time to reflect. I have made some mistakes. I have come off, uh, strongest sometimes as not needed. I've had disagreements with colleagues to a level that I wouldn't want to have. Yeah, e- even though I, I believe sometimes I'm passionate about those items and I, I believe strongly in those items. Uh, I put a lot of position, uh, I put a lot of effort into this position and honest, uh, honestly, you know, it was a lot of that, uh, hearing that, uh, you folks wanted to bring me to remove me from committees that really got the sour taste in my mouth, but I do promise to move forward from that, forget that and work more amicably together with you. I came into politics as one of the, in one of the most controversial times on a national level and a very frustrating time here in North Reading that we've had in quite some time with overrides, state zoning mandates, capital improvement needs that are tapping us on the shoulder every day and budget concerns that are stressing out, out the residents and our own town employees. I'm willing to take it all on and confident that together we can achieve it. I've learned a lot and some of it maybe is that I'm not someone who desires to be considered as a politician while some here may. Uh, I'm involved in so many things, uh, in town, but one thing that I always am is present. I'm always present at events and I'm always present at meetings. I listen, respect, respond and act to my constituents and their feedback and I have never made the TA or my colleagues really ever know who's asking these questions because I happily do it on behalf of my constituents. I look forward to a stronger and more respectful two years with this board, specifically with you, Vincenzo, specifically with you, Rich, and hopefully with your, uh, and with you, Rich, and with you, Steve.
This is a scheduling link. You're pulling the wrong people. I knew that term I had. Don't worry.
It's ten.
It's okay. I, I just called them, oh, what did I call you? Olafland?
Oh, Olafland, yeah. Um, a couple last things, Mr. Chair. I'll make it quick and to touch upon real, uh, Rich, real quick. Uh, to ma- tomorrow may or may not, uh, result in him sitting here after today, uh, but regardless of what happens tomorrow, I want to acknowledge Rich. Uh, Rich has served, uh, six years as a Select Board member and really has been involved in the community for a lot longer than that in his thirty years residency. Uh, to me, I believe that deserves a round of applause. Thank you, Rich. While you and I certainly have not agreed on some things, I wanna say that as of recent with communication between you and I offline, uh, it's been a lot more respectful and I appreciate that and respect that. The volunteerism, uh, that you have provided this town has been admirable and respectable and you've always been a true professional. Uh, myself, this board, uh, and North Reading, thanks you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Leanne, just wanna touch upon on Leanne. You've been a pillar in this community for many years, uh, outside of the six years as a Select Board member and of course, as a tremendous chairwoman. Uh, you have done exactly what you have said you'd do when you campaigned each time. You have exemplified the willingness to go the extra mile for subcommittees and you speak volumes for them as you are constantly keeping this board updated with what's going on in each one. You have been a significant advocate for our first responders, police and fire and veterans. Something that I've, uh, admired of you that isn't said enough is that you always take all angles into consideration before making your determination or vote, as in you listen to everyone and are not biased going into any discussion. You always take a phone call and have an open conversation on any issue. You have been a mentor to me and as a newly elected official and I won't forget that. You have put your foot down when you believe it's necessary and fight for what you believe in, which is also an admirable trait. The Select Board requires someone to have leadership characteristics and you have shown that you are an effective leader. Myself, this board and the people in North Reading, thank you very much. We will miss you in this capacity, but we are all very much happy for you in your new endeavors and wish you nothing but all the best.
Thank you, Nick.
And Mr. Gilbert?
I just, there's a comment that came in just as we were, I think, beginning Board Member reports from somebody who's present under the name El and Matt. If you don't mind, can I ask them on you to offer a public comment?
Sure. I'm going to pause Board Member reports.
Should be able to unmute now, if you just identify yourself.
Hi, good evening, it's Lisa Mackey. Thank you very much for the time, sorry. I just put something in the chat and didn't realize I had to raise my hand, but thank you. Yep, after being on for almost four hours, I just wanted to say that I know there's an election tomorrow and the board structure is going to change, but I wanted to thank all of you, including Mr. Gilberto, for all of your effort, all of the time that you guys take away from your family and friends to prepare for meetings and the very late hours that you serve. My husband, who has endless energy, can make all of these meetings. I have to do the Zoom at home because, you know, it's past my bedtime. I just want to wish Mr. Walner very good luck tomorrow. And Mrs. Gonzalez, thank you so much for your service and your hard work. Thank you for the time that you took to explain things to me when I had a question or concern. Your presence, your leadership, and your business sense are so appreciated. You will be missed, and my very best wishes to you and your future endeavor. And with you gone, I'm not really sure who's going to keep the rest of these guys on their toes, but we'll overcome that, I'm very hopeful for that. But thank you very, very much, and thank you to all of you for all the work you do.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Mr. Larry?
All right, let me just start by, business, just mobile home record patrol board met last week, and again, they're going to be considering the petition of, on Main Street there. First week of June, I don't know, looking to have this move here, and I'm just looking at the schedule in relation to Select Board and planning commissions. So first week of June, at some point, they'll be meeting in a public hearing on the petition of people there at Perry Park to repurpose it. So I just stayed to check the website in relation to that public hearing. Leanne, I do have appreciated your presence on the board, your input, your willingness to listen, your willingness to disagree but not be disagreeable. I think you've worked a very good working relationship in half of the six years you've been on here. You are going to be missed. I mean, I've represented your constituency that you believe characteristically as well. You've done your work, you've put in the time, you've done the liaison assignments, you've put in the hundreds and hundreds of hours necessary to be an effective member of this board, and you've been just that. And I certainly appreciate it. Going forward, I wish you nothing but good health and much success in your new endeavor. And you did a great job as chair, vice chair. And as I said, not everybody that comes here puts in the necessary time to understand, learn, ask the questions, and listen. And you've done all of that, and your services are greatly appreciated by myself personally, and I know from all the members of the community, all the time and effort that you put in. So much success, good health, and, you know, to share a bond as far as as public safety concerns and other issues. And you've served well, and again, same thing with the Housing Authority. You've done the job there and advocated for that particular facility and done a great job. So thank you very much for your service, thank you for taking the time and your family, and bringing away your man, but also your family sacrificing and allowing you to do so. We all know that that's a huge part of being able to do so. So good luck, and you will be missed, and appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you so much, Steve.
Mr. Walner?
Yeah, it's hard to add on to the two accolades we heard. But Leanne, we've served the same amount of time, and I'm being reminded by both Nick and Steve how many other things you've touched that I've even lost track of. So I know like vet services, you've been, you know, really focused on veterans. I know we've done, you know, public safety, we've been involved with that. You've done recycling, you've been involved with the Community Impact Team, and other things that other people, I kind of forgot until you brought it up. So I kind of measure someone's worth by what's the legacy they left behind. You left behind a legacy in a number of different areas, and that's the highest compliment I can give to you is for doing that. So thank you for your time and effort, and I wish you all your best in your new business south of the city. And we always have an open door for you, so thank you, Leanne.
Leanne, I'll go to you in a minute because Steve wasn't done, and I just kind of made him done, but go ahead.
Oh, yeah, something, sorry. Well, we wanted to keep the Leanne flow going.
Yeah, I know, it was appropriate. The other thing, again, to Rich, you know, you deserve a round of applause, but you also deserve a vote tomorrow because you two have done a fantastic job over the last six years and your ten-year, and again, the prior service that you've had and all the other boards, committees, and officials that you participated in. But speaking of legacy, I mean, the things that you've done for the seniors in this town, and I'm talking about, you know, I've been here a long time. In a very short period of time, you have had such a significant impact on the seniors in relation to transportation, in relation to tax breaks, advocacy for the Senior Center along the way. And I'm going to criticize for not being at a liaison meeting, but that's a small portion. Showing up for an hour or two, hour and a half is not what the work is done or has to be done. But you two have left a significant legacy here, and as I said, you deserve more than a round of applause. I believe you deserve a vote tomorrow and to be reelected as board because you've earned it. You can, you take the job seriously, you take the time to understand it, you follow through on your ideas and advocate for them and force the board to take some action. Whether it's positive or negative, but at least take some action on it, move forward. It's a rare breed of a person that can come in a situation like this and actually move things forward. And you have done exactly that. So you certainly deserve a vote tomorrow, and I wish you nothing but success in your efforts tomorrow. And just, Chairman, there's just one other matter I want to bring up that you can somewhat touch upon, Mr. Massey. Mr. Massey sent us a memo a couple weeks ago regarding the Pride Parade and Beltline, you know, a few issues in relation to that, asked that it be brought up, and didn't bring it up. Something that's worth talking about, I suppose. But the most important issue that he identified, this is his words, "most important", is that this event is in a public space and marketed as a family-friendly event. It has a history of children attending this event, has drag queens attending, performing, dancing in front of them in order to look out for the children. I'd like these performers to fill out core reforms and be reviewed and approved by the town. I need to better understand what the concerns are truly. This is an event that's been going on for about five years now.
What event are you referencing? You didn't mention the event.
The Pride Parade, the Pride Parade. And he's looking to have performers cored because they're children, but what's the inference here? I mean, I know what I believe the inference is, that I'm a fine defendant by it, but I'd like to know what the inference is here. I think it's unfortunate that he thinks this way. Again, what a core reform is going to, what's it going to prove? That someone doesn't have a record, but why are they being cored? Because they're performing in front of a family-friendly group where parents bring their children by choice and are familiar with what the event is? So I'm willing to discuss it. If you wanted to discuss it, I'm looking for some clarification as to what you really mean and what your fears are, what your concern is.
Hold on, I'm going to allow, because you brought it up, and it has to be fair, to, for Mr. Massey to have a brief, if you'd like to respond, but and actually, no, I can't even say this is going to be an agenda item because I'm only, I turn into a pumpkin at midnight and no longer chair. So unless, so however, Mr., and then, but if the next chair, be it me or the next person or whoever it is, then wants to put it on an agenda item, that will be. But I will allow out of fairness, Mr. Massey, if you'd like to make a comment on it.
Sure. So I spoke with the organizer of this event. We had a great discussion about, first of all, started off by saying how I believe someone calling me anti-LGBTQ and this email about an event is completely different, completely different. And I think, Mrs. Gonzalez, you and I went on last year about that when everyone showed up and said that we were anti-LGBTQ because all we said was, eh, I'm not too fond of men dressing as girls in front of children, half-naked. Excuse me, sorry. But, so we sit here on the Select Board, elected officials by the residents of North Reading. This is in a public space, so this comes by our desk, whether some people like to believe so or not. We were all sworn in, including the town administrator, to uphold the bylaws of North Reading. That is what we were sworn in to do. Well, let's read the bylaws of North Reading. "You are not allowed to have carnival, fair, exhibition, or similar event, which I consider this a similar event. No operation is allowed on Sundays, and this event is currently set up for a Sunday." That's just one, I'll keep going. "There is use of town resources, i.e. police details. Streets are blocked off. Those police details are not paid for by the organizers. All I'm asking them to do is to pay for our resources." "I also inquire that they should pull a permit." "Permit is cheap, it's about the process of receiving approval of the Select Board to have a parade in our town. This way, not everyone thinks that they can just create their own parade through town by any group at any time." And I'm just going to say this for an example. Let's say Nick Massey wanted to have a parade in North Reading to celebrate Nick Massey, right? Vincenzo wouldn't come, I would be there. Fun, fun.
I don't go to none, I have no time.
So, yeah, here we go. So what I'm getting at is, if it were me, I would say, you guys have had an event, North Reading, and I don't need to pull a permit, I don't need to pay for police details. I expect you guys to block streets off, and that's it. So what I'm doing is I'm trying to set a precedence of the future. I'm looking after the future of the town and saying that we don't want anyone saying that they can just have a parade for whatever reason. So we need to set a precedent. Now-
Hold on, no, no.
No, I'm sorry, I was asked to, let me continue.
Yeah, but I asked for a response, not for the whole agenda item, which we can't have tonight. But I am, that was a good response.
I think if someone, I'm just thinking if someone's going to call me out on that, I think I could-
You just called him, I mean, you just, you called him back like collect, you just gave him everything.
Even as, even as, so even as the Select Board policy that Mr. Gilberto sent me in this email thread says below that the Select Board is required to approve parades. Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, I've been on the board for a year. Last year, this happened, we didn't get approved. Again, only sworn in to uphold the bylaws. Most importantly, my last section here, this event is in a public space, marketed as a family-friendly event. I'd like these performers to fill out core reforms and reviewed and approved by the town. I think this is a simple request, something that would take place of anything, of anyone going on town property and touring an event. That is baseball games, that is soccer games, the coaches, all cored. That is, anyone going into the school to speak to students would be required to get cored. Why is there any pushback if they can change the day and pass a cored, I think it's fine?
Thank you, Mr. Massey. No, thank you, Mr. Massey.
They're going to look out for the children.
So hold on, hold on, time, wait, now I'm going to get to talk, can I talk? Because like, can I talk? So there's this little asterisk here that says, you know, under the Board Member Reports, for old and new business to, you know, that we can get away with a matter not reasonably anticipated that the Select Board needs to be discussed. This was not reasonably anticipated. Both said your thing, thank you for responding, thank you for bringing it up. But, no, no, that's it, because then it becomes an agenda item, and I'm not going to do that. It's eleven oh five, I'm not going to do it, I don't care how many people don't like me coming out of this room. Not that I'm very popular right now anyways. So if there's something else we want to bring up, please do in your Board Member Report. And not, I want to get back to talking about how great Leanne is.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, his response is what it is, so I accept what his response is.
But that's it, okay. So, and we-
And I would suggest that we-
We have a discussion, a part of the discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Before the event.
All right, well, that I can- Mr. Walner, were you done before? Because I know I stole his thunder on Leanne, and then I went to you, do you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say again, New Bingo was great. It was just nice to see so many people out there, you know, just enjoying themselves, it was a great event. You know, I think there was like two hundred people there or something like that, and it was just, you know, it was just fun. And just, the town really needed that jolt, and we need more of that, you know? So that was really, you know, my wife and I enjoyed it very much and really liked seeing all the people having a good time. It's the way it should be.
I think Peter in the Ford of Town 30 does have one of these hobbies that we need, it's great.
Yeah, and I guess Moose Hall, the hill that gets torn down, Moose Hall is our new favorite place, right? And their drinks aren't expensive, so it's all good. That's it, thank you.
Rich, I'm not going to comment on you because I'm a superstitious Italian that if I say one good thing about you, you've got no chance tomorrow. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to, because, you know. But Mrs. Gonzalez, so when I came on the board, I, I mean, I was really new to town. Couple of years, I knew a lot of people my age who I had met fairly quickly, right before COVID hit. But, you know, finally, when we started, you know, coming out of our shells, like, you know, like a chestnut at Christmas, Mrs. Gonzalez was one of the first to, you know, started talking to, introduced me to a lot of people. Again, I didn't know a lot of people. So, but one thing that I'd say that, because I worked very closely with her, has her vice chair, is that she made it work, and she put in the time at the detriment to her every day. Okay, because especially chair or vice chair, both are in budget season, but chair all the time. The amount of hours during the day that cannot be done after, and I'm talking all hours, meaning, oh, you had something at eleven? No, you didn't, because based on your title, you have to deal with this not tomorrow, but now. And she did that over and over. And I remember that just to me being like, wow, like, I know her schedule, I know what she has to get done during the day, but she still sacrificed a lot of personal and business for the town. And I think that's something that I can appreciate now because of the role and even the vice chair. But like, that's something where all the other, all the other things we can do, liaison assignments, we try to do a lot at evening, but I do think that's what I want to recognize, that how much she took time out of her day to get things done. And sometimes it's, I mean, I think a couple of times it was just, well, I had to cancel or not take a client appointment, right? Just because, well, I got to deal with this, so it is what it is. Because I know I've done that, so I think we're losing an asset. And now, you know, Mr. Walner's going to use her as one of the statistics of everybody moving away once their kids are done, you know, just to add to that pile.
Yeah, I don't like that. Leanne, what are you doing? You're breaking my numbers.
You know, so now we're going to have like a case in point to like, and be brought up that like you all know about, like, hey, remember Gonzalez, she left because, probably taxes. So, but no, I think that, you know, I thank you for everything you did. You always, especially, you know, before I had a self-regulator's chair, when it was just Select Board Member Studo, she would call me off the, you know, sometimes I'd call her to get off the ledge because I wanted to come in here like, you know, like a wrestler used to coming down the aisle, and she'd be like, yeah, you're really not going to get anywhere if you go in there and toss tables. So I appreciate that. So I appreciate that, Mrs. Gonzalez, and, you know, I hope you're happy by the water down in, no one knows how to get their hull. And, you know, we will, but we'll always be here if you wanna take the without-traffic fifty-five-minute commute to come see us late at night. I mean, if you left now, it's probably better, but so, but thank you again, and I will give you the final word.
Okay, I wanna thank you. I wanna thank all of you. Such kind words, really. It's very touching, and I appreciate it very much. And I do have a farewell speech, but before I do that, I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of Joe Vino. Just an amazing, great guy that I knew from when I first came into town. He sat on the board for many years, and I would reach out to him many times with concerns. And he was always, always ready to answer a question. Really probably mentored me for this position, cause he was always available and willing to talk about anything. He was a police officer in Reading, military, I mean, just, you know, I, I think he deserves to be remembered. So I wanted to do that first. I'm just, I'm very touched by all this. Thank you so much, and Rita, your kind words, and Lisa, and Kevin, and all of my colleagues. I'm here before you today with a mix of emotions, gratitude, nostalgia, and excitement for what lies ahead. Serving on this select board has been one of the greatest honors of my life. It has been a privilege to work alongside such dedicated colleagues, town officials, and most importantly, the residents of this incredible community. When I first stepped on this role, I did so with a deep commitment to serving the best interests of our town. Through challenges and triumphs, we have worked together to make meaningful progress. Whether it was strengthening town services, making financial decisions to ensure stability, while working on initiatives to improve the quality of life for everyone who calls this place home. I wanna take a moment to thank my fellow board members, past and present, for their collaboration, debate, and shared passion for our town's future. Your dedication and willingness to tackle tough issues and on have been truly inspiring. To our town employees and volunteers, your hard work behind the scenes is what keeps this community running smoothly. And I'm deeply grateful for all that you do. And most importantly, I wanna thank the residents. Your voices, your ideas, and concerns have guided my decisions, and I've always strived to represent you with integrity and fairness. This town is special because of the people who care so deeply about it, and I have no doubt that it will continue to thrive in the years to come. To whichever candidates win tomorrow and fill the seats, I hope your commitment and passion to our community continues, and I look forward to seeing the continued progress and success of this board and our town. Thank you for all your support, your trust, and the opportunity to serve. It's really been an honor, and I wish all the candidates tomorrow the best of luck. Thank you all. I'm gonna miss all of you. I am gonna miss you all.
Thanks, Leanne.
And I'll close the board member reports by saying that good luck to everyone tomorrow. Mrs. Menipelli once said something that it stuck with me. It takes courage to put your name on a billboard and hold it out there to the public, because you don't know how people are gonna react. It does. Cause that's what she used to say, like, just, just the act of doing it takes courage, cause most people can't. Cause, you know, as Mr. O'Leary likes to say, after your day one, your popularity goes like this. So, you know, so, but thank you.
All right. We have a whole lot of meeting, right? Only a few things.
Second shift.
So for Zero Eightable Street, I recommend that we pass over that, because we do not have the hands for parcel.
Okay.
Move things along.
Okay.
For one oh four Lowell Road Affordable Housing Regulatory Agreement, this is the third installment of agreements that are required to ensure that the units that are being constructed as affordable units are protected as affordable units moving forward. So that requires approval of an agreement by the select board to, to provide that protection. I'm just scanning through to the appropriate place in the packet. Responding as quickly. So you see the document has been provided to us by Polte Homes of New England, signed by Mark Mastriani, who's a principal that we generally have dealt with.
Page ninety-nine.
Where they are agreeing to the restriction. The restriction was part of an approval that was made by the zoning board of appeals back, I believe, in twenty twenty-one. There were two agreements that were already approved. This is the third. You see that the unit numbers are identified in the, in the document as being affordable, along with the identified price in accordance with the affordability restrictions for sales for both the one and two bedroom units. We're recommending that this be approved and that the motion has to be struck, authorizes the chair to sign the agreement.
Second motion, Mr. Massey.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve third amendment to Martin's Landing Affordable Housing Regulatory Agreement and to authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Massey.
Aye.
And the chair's aye.
Mr. Chairman, if we might be able to get you through the town hall over the next couple of days for a notarized signature, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have it down?
Did John Frum need to be here in notarized?
Oh, of course. Let's go, Burrow, and move on.
The next item we turn over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. So happy report that, per usual, Mr. Gilberto received an outstanding score for his town administrative report, once again. And again, what can I say? It's, it's very difficult times, and I see how he handles it with employees. It's demanding. It's almost impossible to make everybody happy. Just, and then more, more than everything, you know, I've only been in this role, this is going into the next one, year six, but I see, I see what goes on in other towns and cities if they have a mayor, and I realize that the person administering or managing the town, depending on their title, does make a very big difference. Okay, because it, you know, you, you can see it that it's, it's one thing, things out of their control, which no one can, you know, take into account. But there are things under their control, and those are the ones that, you know, how I think you could, you best judge someone. So I, you know, I know I'm very happy. I think one member that wants to speak after me may, but, you know, again, thank you, Mr. Gilberto, again, for another great year. And hopefully, you know, hopefully between economic conditions, the select boards and the residents, we can make it just a little bit easier in certain departments when it comes to revenue. Let's see what we can do there, but, you know, thank you. So before I go to anyone else, is there anything you wanted to add, Mr. Gilberto?
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll just, obviously, you know, like I've said every year, you're consummate professional. You know all the issues. You know it better than anybody else. You're, you have very, a lot of responsibilities, all varied. How you wear all these different hats, I never quite understand it, because it's really hard, hard act to follow. You know our town inside and out, but you're always fair. You're always, I used to say Switzerland, but Switzerland isn't neutral anymore. You know, but you get my point, is that you're very fair. You listen to everybody. You respond in kind. I think your performance has been exceptional, and, you know, I've, I've been indulged to have someone like you, to work with you. I know we've had other TAs that have not had this reputation. You have definitely earned the highest marks I've ever heard in thirty years I've been here. So my pleasure to always work with you. Thank you for what you do.
Mr. O'Leary.
Yeah, I mean, I've been fortunate enough to know pretty much every town administrator since we've been with the town administrator form of government. And I, I can honestly say, as the chairman, through you, to Mr. Gilberto, that you by far have, you're races. You're the, you're at the top of the heap as far as your ability to manage this board, you know, manage the relationship between the board and other, you know, the school committee and finance committee and everybody else, and the public. You get up in front of town meeting, and you have credibility that you've earned. You have very high ethical standards that you stick to, and I understand, you know, your job is very challenging, and you meet the challenge. And I think that the scores that you have achieved, not just this year, but in previous years, is reflective of your ability to, to do multiple things, do multiple tasks all at the same time with very, very little resources in the way of support. And you've put together a tremendous team to work with you and for you and for us, the community, and that assists you, I know. And you constantly are giving town employees praise, and it's earned, but you're the face of the community here. And people come and go off this board, and it's you and your position that you hold that fits the glue and helps us to do things and has some continuity moving forward, and it's greatly appreciated. I think the score that you got is, is, is very good. I think it should be better. Personally, I think, you know, you've done, you have done an outstanding job. And I'm grateful for your input, and I'm grateful for your willingness to listen. I'm grateful for your pushback and your tolerance of me, and, but I'll see you very professionally handle me very well, which is an easy thing to do. Again, you tell me where you think I'm right or wrong, or you disagree, and I have the utmost respect for you and your verdict. So congratulations. Glad you're here. I'm glad we have you for a long period of time. This past year, we locked you up for three or four years, which is great, and I hope you have many more years ahead of you here, because you served the town well. Thank you.
Gonzalez.
Yeah, I don't know that the, I don't know if North Reading knows how fortunate they are to have Michael as their town administrator. He's a great leader. He approaches decisions with thoughtfulness and genuine care for the community, because he lives in it. It matters to him. My six years on the board, he is just a voice of reason. I, I, he's just an asset. He's an absolute asset to the town and to the board, and we're very lucky to have him.
Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback and the board's continued confidence. I'm a representative of the many people who work for us day in, day out, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I happen to be the one at this table, but, you know, they're the ones that, that get it done for us, as you all know, so I thank them.
Mr. Chairman.
No, please.
I move to place a nomination for following meeting for appointment to the historical commission for a full term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Martha Polly.
Martha, I'm sorry, Martha Polly.
Martha Polly. Second.
Second. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, consultation with the chair, Nancy Coughlin, recommend Martha Polly be appointed to the commission. Again, this just expires twenty twenty-six, so a year, basically a two-year term, a year and a half now, term. And that would bring full complement to the historical commission, and we highly recommend the appointment.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. O'Leary.
Martha Polly.
Mr. Wallner.
Martha Polly.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Martha Polly.
Mr. Massey.
Martha Polly.
Chair is Martha Polly. Okay. Let's go, Burrow, the integrated agreement.
So this is taking the memorandum agreement that the board agreed to with the Jessnut Street, so one sixty-six Jessnut Street Association DPW Union last summer, and integrating those changes into the larger collective bargaining agreement for the term that was agreed to. Does not afford any additional benefits or wage increases. It simply takes what we agreed to with them in two thousand and twenty-four and integrates it into a larger three-year contract. So I recommend for both to approve the integrated agreement.
Mr. Massey. Just a quick question. The difference between this agreement and the one we just signed is, the one we signed last year.
Sure. So the one we signed last year is a memorandum of agreement that conferred wage increases, benefits, and benefits. I think reclassification of a position or increase in compensation for a position. This just takes that agreement and puts it into a larger thirty-on-page contract, so that it reflects the actual conditions under which employees are working.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify and sign the integrated collective bargaining agreement based on the parties' prior memorandum of agreement and contract between the town and North Reading and the DPW Union for the period of July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, this is just a follow-through with what the board, a few years back, we maybe had had, most of our contracts had memorandum of agreements, and they weren't integrated with the old ones. So we were working off a document, so what, four or five contracts old, trying to integrate everything in one of the tasks of the year. So a few years ago, please, just, let's consolidate it, so we move forward in the next contract. We have one document to work from that both parties agreed to, and we're working from, rather than trying to second-guess things. So this is just a follow-up on it, and I'm happy to say we've successfully done all that. So thank you for putting that all together to get HR to, I'm sure.
Yes.
You know, Paul Collins, trying to get that done, so it's great.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Chair is aye. Mr. Massey, you go over right to us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the April seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As was anticipated, an updated civil service list for firefighters has been issued. The request of the fire chief, I intend to sign a requisition to hire four firefighter paramedics. See intention of the chief, depending on the number of candidates that are hired at the conclusion of this process, to request to hire additional four firefighters on or on October first. Continuing with our efforts to update fee schedules, a conservation commission has approved the attached updated fee schedule for its department for applicants. Please to just report here what I think you already know, which is that seventeen residents graduated from the North Reading Citizen Police Academy last month. And I thank Chief Zimmerman for his efforts to offer this program. We appreciate the civic engages of those who participated. The director of public services, a representative of the transportation committee, and I met with Senator Tara April to discuss our continuing interest in being served by the MBTA Paratransit Program, known as the RIDE. There isn't an immediate plan to expand the service, but the senator continues to investigate options to do so. Additionally, Representative Jones has been a continuing advocate, including the successful offering of an amendment to the so-called Fair Share Supplemental Budget that would require the MBTA to offer the RIDE in North Reading. The language was included in the House version of the bill, must still go through the Senate and then be signed by the governor if it were to become law. The town has been awarded an IT grant from the State Community Compact Program. The deadline for expenditure is October of twenty twenty.
for expenditure is October of twenty twenty-six, and while I have signed the grant agreement in order to secure the funding, I do not anticipate that we will expend any of the funds until after June Town Meeting, to ensure we're not in a situation where we may need to pay back grant funds, we may not end up without being compliant in the state's definition. I attached a procurement schedule for the hiring of a consultant to assist with the continued fire station planning, looking to identify a firm and have that price before the June Town Meeting, as I mentioned during the discussion of the warrant. The town planner submitted an update to the state regarding our subsidized housing inventory earlier this year, I attached a summary as well as the inventory listing, we continue to try to stay on top of that every time it comes out, one thing I know comes up often is the inclusion of mobile homes, the state will not accept them, because they do not have a deed of friction ensuring that their rent is restricted to a certain level. And finally, the police department has deployed their body-worn cameras in accordance with the agreement between the town's police unions and, between the police unions and the town, I attached a copy of a press release that was, that was issued, I believe, in early April on this matter. I'll just close my comments by saying that I, I thank Mrs. Gonzalez for her service to the town, we were talking earlier on the phone, you know, it seems like she's been, seems like I've worked with her my entire time working here, and she corrected me a couple of weeks ago, that's actually only been two terms, not in six years, not nine, but we're gonna miss you, as your colleagues indicated, I thank you for your, for your service, for your insight, for your willingness to step up and serve as a chair for this board as well, which is not easy to do, and I wish you, wish you well, so thank you.
Thank you very much, man.
Mr. Massey.
You can let, but, yeah, absolutely.
Make the motion.
Okay, yeah, all right.
What's that?
Motion to adjourn, you wanna make it?
For you to make that final motion, Leanne.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Do you wanna vote no?
Second.
Do you wanna vote no?
I'm not gonna entertain a motion for no. But motion by Mrs. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Massey, any further discussion? Hearing none.
Yes, I'm gonna miss all you, I'm gonna miss these late nights, I'm gonna get more beauty sleep.
Mr. Massey.
I am good, sir, eleven thirty-two.
No, you have to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eleven thirty-two, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair is aye. Have a nice trip back.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Rich, you have luck tomorrow.